Good morning, welcome to the October 20th, 2020 public hearing, public meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Bland?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson? Commissioner Jefferson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Lutfi, you're muted?
I'm here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Holford Smith?
Here.
All right, we're all set.
Great, thank you, good morning and welcome to the October 20th public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. We're starting a little bit late, so we had some tough technical difficulties this morning, so thank you all for your patience. This meeting is conducted via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. If you wish to watch the hearing only, please tune into the hearing on our YouTube, on our LPC page. And if you would like to testify on a hearing item, please join the Zoom meeting at the estimated time for that item listed on our public hearing agenda. When we take testimony, we will move each speaker to be a panelist so that they may speak. And we will start with those speakers who have signed up in advance and then take all other speakers. And we're going to start the morning with two public meeting items, which are items that have already had public hearings and are back today in response to comments made by the commissioners after listening to the presentation and the public testimony at their hearing. So we'll start with those, there will be no testimony, and then we will move to the public hearing agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Caroline Kane Levy, the Deputy Director of the Preservation Department, to start the agenda. Caroline?
Thank you, Sarah. The first item is item number one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. LPC 20-09763, 65 Horatio Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, Block 643, Lot 62. A Greek Revival-style house built in 1845, and the application is to construct rooftop and sideyard additions and alter rear windows. This was heard on September 15th, 2020.
And Commissioners, staff will be presenting this public meeting item. Staff, please state your record and maybe go.
Good morning Commissioners, Dina Tats Winter, Preservation Staff. The item before you is 65 Horatio Street. And there we go. A Greek Revival-style house located in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This application, as stated, was originally brought forth at the September 15th public hearing. These are the existing conditions. And Commissioners will recall that the side bay was added in the first quarter of the 20th century and that the side addition seen here was present by at least the 1930s and was removed by time of designation. And that the applicants are proposing to replicate the details of this sidewall in the design of their new sideyard addition. This slide shows historic precedent for rooftop additions in the district, specifically studio windows. And this one in particular, with its angled primary facade glazing and the visible solid side condition, was a reference point for the updated proposal at the subject premises. So the updates to the design based on Commissioner feedback are as follows. Regarding the sideyard addition, there were comments about reducing it in size, and so the height was lowered by nine inches so that the wall now meets the minimum 42-inch code requirement as there is a terrace behind, which you'll see in the section view in just a moment. And the cladding of the side addition was modified from metal to painted wood in order to match a more typical historic materiality. And then regarding the rooftop addition, the stair bulkhead was incorporated into the side of the addition and the resulting facade is now set back several feet from the edge of the roof. The front facade has been canted back slightly, which again you'll see on the following slide. And the horizontal mullions were removed, and the roofline condition here was re-studied. So as you can see here on the side, the stair bulkhead again was incorporated into the side of the addition. And it's now a solid gray cement stucco instead of glass. And the terrace railing was set back three additional feet, so it is no longer visible over the primary facade and only minimally visible over the secondary facade. You can also see that angle here of the south facade, as well as the setback and the new eve and roof condition. And then also here is the terrace with the slightly lowered sidewall so that it now meets the minimum code requirement for this terrace here. The rear of the addition was also changed from glass to brick and now has a narrow punched window opening. The applicants are also proposing to slightly modify the dimensions of this existing masonry opening and window rather than adding an additional window at the top floor. Commissioners will note that the rear facade is not visible from any public thoroughfare and that the house is not part of an existing row. So this is the original rendering as proposed. And here's the updated proposal. The plan here shows how the stair was reoriented so that it could be fully incorporated into the massing of the addition. So just to quickly go over this in section, you can see the removal of the mullions, the incorporation of the stair bulkhead and the new roof condition and how the whole thing is set back a little bit now. This is the previous proposal, and then here's the new condition with the revised massing. The mock-up was revised slightly, I'll show you the views. So the visibility over the side facade has not really changed appreciably, but with the setback of the railing, it is now essentially not visible over the primary facade at all. And as before, this is really the most prominent view. And those are all the updates, the applicants are here to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, but just before we go to questions, I just want to kind of remind everybody, so the application had two components, it was the sideyard addition and then the rooftop addition, which included occupiable space of both bulkhead and a railing. And at the hearing, the commission asked that the sideyard addition be lowered and that the materials be re-studied because it seemed that in the historic photographs that they may have been wood. And at the rooftop addition, there were some commissioners who supported it as is, and many others asked that it be redesigned to be more evocative of studio windows and that the bulkhead be integrated into the addition itself and the railing be set back. So the applicants have made changes today to each of those aspects. And so Commissioners, you may have questions about how they've done it or what the actual dimensions are. I just, I wasn't sure, Dana, if you described what the material was of the sideyard addition and if it had been changed.
Yes, it's been changed to painted wood.
Okay, sorry if you said that, okay. Commissioner Chapin? Please go ahead.
Yes, that was my question, Sarah, whether there had been any change to the sideyard, thank you. So that answered my question.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I may have missed in the presentation, but what is the material on the side of the rooftop addition, is it stucco?
It's stucco, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Any questions for the applicant before we move to our discussion? Okay, great, then I think we'll go ahead and move to the discussion. And I'm starting to unmute you all for that discussion, so for many of you, you'll have to accept that request.
Sarah, do we want to note any testimony that had come in?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Rich. Did we, the hearing is of course closed, but we do welcome any written comments on revised proposals.
Yes, so we've received 17 letters in opposition to the revised proposal, including from GVSHP, HCC, and many from neighbors.
All right. So again, any final questions for the applicant team at all? Okay, so we'll move to our discussion. And as I said, there were two components here, and the applicants have responded to each of the comments that we made. So why don't we go ahead and start? Commissioner Holford Smith, would you like to start?
Sure. I think the applicant has been very responsive to our comments. I think that the change to the material from metal to wood for the sideyard is much more appropriate and lowering the height of it. And I think that now is approvable. I think the form of the rooftop addition is much improved. I think, and of course it's a rendering, and so it's not, you know, exactly how it's going to turn out in reality, but it looks it could use a little articulation at the roofline, and I was wondering whether stucco was the right material for the sidewall or whether it should be like a standing seam metal instead. But otherwise, I think it's acceptable.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Chapin, sorry.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith, I think that they've eliminated the visibility over the primary facade, which is very important. They've integrated the bulkhead, the changes to the sideyard are all in a positive direction. And the rooftop makes a reference to the artist's studio, which is, I think, is much more successful. I also don't have any problem with the changes to the back of the building, I think they're all fine, actually. You know, if it could be reduced at all, that would be good, but I think since there's no longer visibility from the primary facade, I can approve it as presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Goldblum? I think you're frozen.
Frozen.
All right, maybe we'll, Commissioner Goldblum will come back to you, and let's move to Commissioner Devonshire.
I think they've responded appropriately to our concerns, and I can approve this.
Commissioner Chen?
I agree, and I share in Commissioner Holford Smith's comment about changing the material of the rooftop stucco.
To a standing seam metal?
Yeah, something better than stucco.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Goldblum, are you?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I had a little today's our glitch day, I'm fine with it as is, actually, I think it's very elegant. And I think that the addition of the wood side structure is really going to enhance this little part of the village.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bland?
I think the sideyard addition is fine now. I'm still struggling a bit with the rooftop. And I can't quite tell if it's the if it's the rendering, which is, as others have noted, is a little non-articulated. Maybe articulation would help in the rendering, otherwise the renderings have been beautiful in this project, so that's, I'm a little flummoxed by the fact that it might be the rendering. But it might not be the rendering for me, and I think now I'm in the clear minority, but I think it's maybe just too big. Something doesn't ring right as a artist addition. And maybe that's because so often we don't see it so prominently in the village as we do here with this open gap next to the building. Anyway, I'm just still struggling with it, and I don't think it's quite there yet from my take. Certainly if it's stucco, it's really not there, so the addition of metal, the substitution of metal for stucco was certainly a step in the right direction, but I think it's still too high.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I'm muted.
I really appreciate the applicant's responsiveness to our to our concerns, I think the sideyard addition is very successful now. And I really, I also feel that the rooftop addition is no longer obtrusive. I do agree with Commissioner Holford Smith that seen metal would, in the same color, would work, and it actually would speak to a little bit more to the addition. So, that's an accurate approach with that.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
The sideyard addition, I think here, everything is context, and this the context of this project, this diagonal view means that the addition is too big, it's too large. It doesn't work with the scale of the building.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I actually, I think was one of the people who supported it as it was presented last time. And I still, I can understand what Fred Bland is saying about this feeling a little bit off, and I'm not sure why that is, and I still, I think, would have preferred the previous version. But I can support this, and I would agree that the material should not be stucco but standing seam of some kind.
Okay, great. All right, so I think we have enough votes for an approval with modifications to change the side material to a standing seam metal and to continue to develop some articulation in those materials. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make that motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC 20-09763, 65 Horatio Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. A Greek Revival-style house built in 1845, application is to construct rooftop and sideyard additions and alter rear windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval of modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building, that this mid-19th century building has been highly modified throughout its history, including significant changes to the roof and sideyard, and therefore the presence of visible additions will be in keeping with the history of alterations to the building. That the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the Horatio Street facade and only seen from public thoroughfares within the context of larger neighboring buildings. That the materials, neutral finish, and simple detailing of the rooftop addition will recall characteristics of rooftop accretions sometimes found in buildings throughout the historic district. That the construction of the rooftop addition on the rear parapet and change to the top floor window opening at the simply designed rear facade, which was significantly altered or rebuilt and which is not part of a row or in alignment with the rear facades of neighboring properties, will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building or surrounding properties. That the minimal change to the pitch of the roof of the building will be a discreet modification, which will not alter the overall character of the roof. That the relocated chimney flues will be typical in design and in keeping with utilitarian accretions of this type in terms of the visibility from public thoroughfares. That the Horatio Street facade of the proposed sideyard addition will match the historic freestanding wall in terms of scale, massing, window and door configuration, cladding and coping dimensions, details, material and finish based on historic photographic documentation. That the removal of the relatively simply designed lower portion of the projecting side bay, which has been partially obstructed from view from public thoroughfares since its construction, will not diminish the historic character of the bay. That the lengthened masonry opening and doors at the projecting bay will be compatibly scaled with the bay. That the proportions, multi-light configuration, and finish of the proposed doors at the bay will help them harmonize with the penetration pattern of the building. And that except for the upper portion of the doors, the alterations to the projecting side bay and rear facade will not be visible from any public thoroughfare. However, I find that the material of the sidewall of the rooftop addition in stucco is not appropriate and should be changed to a standing seam metal panel in a similar color, and that the applicant should have worked with staff to increase the articulation of the rooftop addition.
All right, and Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland, to all note, has entered the hearing.
Yes, nay.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with seven in favor, sorry, eight in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
I apologize. Next item is item number two in the public meeting agenda. Docket number LPC 20-08756, 462 Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, Borough of Manhattan, Block 473, Lot 1. Application for a certificate of appropriateness, a French Renaissance Revival-style store and loft building designed by John Correa and built in 1879 to 80. Application is to install canopies, lighting, and signage, and this was heard at the public hearing of September 15th, 2020.
And Commissioners, again, staff will be walking you through the revisions made by the applicants, and the applicants are available for questions afterwards. Staff, you now have control of the presentation, you may begin.
All right, and I'll just note for the record that Commissioner Holford Smith is recused on this item.
Thank you, good morning Commissioners, Holly Hughes, Preservation Staff. The subject property is 462 Broadway, located at the northeast corner of Broadway and Grand Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. The proposed work is to install signage and canopies. And as said, this item was initially presented at the September 15th public hearing where no action was taken. Most Commissioners expressed concerns about the cumulative effect of the proposed signage and commented specifically on certain aspects of the proposal, including the strip lighting proposed at the window perimeters, the size and position of signage at the storefront cornice, and the proposed canopy at the Grand Street entrance. The Commissioners requested that the applicant omit the lighting at the window perimeter, modify the sign panels at the storefront cornice to meet the dimensions and angle of the master plan, and restudy the attachment of the letters on those panels, and restudy the canopy at Grand Street. This is a rendering of the revised proposal. In response to the Commissioners' comments, the applicants have made the following revisions. They've removed the lighting at the window perimeters and are now proposing an applied yellow vinyl, modifying sign panels at the storefront cornice to match the master plan in dimension and angle with the letters attached vertically, and correcting the location of the Grand Street entrance to further down the block. On September 15th, the rendering incorrectly showed that canopy in this bay where it's being proposed correctly on the east side of that other pier. And they've reduced the projection of the canopies on Broadway and Grand Street by a total of six inches, so from three foot six inches to three feet. For context, this is the site plan. And this is the previously proposed Broadway elevation. And this is the new proposed Broadway elevation, showing the changes, including that elimination of the illumination at the window perimeter and the modification of the signage, as well as the decrease in the canopy projection. This is a detail of the changes in the sign panels, the left is showing what was previously proposed, and the current proposal showing the angled panel and the vertical drop of the letters. This is the previous proposal at the Grand Street entrance, and the new proposed elevation showing the reduced projection at that canopy. And this is the previous proposal for signage on Grand Street, and the new proposed elevation showing the changes to the illumination being removed around the window, as well as the changes of the signage. And here again is the rendering of the new proposal. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Holly. Are there any questions, Commissioners? Okay, so I think if there are no questions, we'll go ahead and move to our discussion. And, you know, this was an application where we really, I think, generally had concerns with the cumulative amount of signage, and in particular that illumination and the mesh signs. So the mesh now has been reduced to the size that is in conformance with the master plan, and it's before us today just because the letters are still vertical. But otherwise, it is, it would align with the master plan. So with that, Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start?
Sure. I think they've responded again appropriately, and it's not overwhelming anymore, I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
Commissioner Bland?
I do, I agree as well.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree as well.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
It's been simplified, and I agree with everyone else.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I didn't have a problem with the overall amount of signage, but I really was not comfortable with the signage along the cornice. And I recognize that as part of the master plan, I just don't, I don't understand that aspect of the master plan. Because I imagine that if every single part of, you know, every storefront on this incredible, incredible building were to be able to have their signs on the cornice, I mean, I just can't imagine what the thing would look like. So I'm afraid that I cannot support it, even though I recognize it's sort of that it's been approved in another way in terms of the master plan, but I can't go forward and prove it.
All right, and, you know, Holly, I don't know if the master plan actually had a limit on the number, overall number.
It does, Sarah, thank you. It's actually four signs, and these are two of the locations that they were previously approved under that master plan.
So four signs, meaning that there would only be another two bays on the entire building that would have a sign on the cornice?
Correct.
I see. Well, then I'll let me think about that still, thank you.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Holford Smith? I'm sorry, she's recused. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree that they have responded to our concerns and that because I can approve it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Me too, it's appropriate.
Okay, all right, so I think we have enough to support it, so Commissioner Devonshire, would you make that motion?
Sure. In the matter of 462 Broadway in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, an application to install canopies, lighting, and signage. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the projecting metal channel above each of the entrances will be simply designed well scaled to their locations and in keeping with the character of signage traditionally used to identify entries to commercial stores. That the placement of metal mesh sign panels sloped against the storefront cornice will be in keeping with the standards established by the existing master plan. And then installing signage at the mesh panels in a vertical orientation in lieu of an angle will not substantially diminish the uniformity of the master plan. That the vinyl signage at the storefront glazing will be in keeping with the signage commonly found throughout the historic district in terms of its tight placement and size. The cumulative amount of signage will be compatible with the size of the storefront and not overwhelm the building. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Okay, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote? Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor, one recused, and none opposed, the motion carries.
Approved, thank you, and we'll now move to our public hearing portion of the agenda.
The first item on the public hearing agenda is item number one. Docket number LPC 20-06907, 807 East 19th Street in the Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District, Borough of Brooklyn, Block 6694, Lot 16, in application for a certificate of appropriateness, an arts and crafts style house built circa 1910 to 1920. The application is to replace siding and windows and install a balcony.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Note that staff will be walking through the proposal, and the applicants are available for questions afterwards.
Good morning Commissioners, Abby Harlbut, Preservation Staff. This application is for work at 807 East 19th Street, located on the east side of East 19th Street between Avenue H and Glenwood Road in the Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District. So there are three aspects to this proposal. The first is to replace the existing historic stucco cladding throughout this entire wood frame building with a composite hardy plank siding. So here's an ex, photo of the existing conditions, and here's a photo of the 1940s tax photo. And I'll take you through some of the additional photos of the existing conditions. So here's a side view, and then another side view. And here are some close up, this is the rear, and then some close up photos of, of some of the, the damage that exists and some of the, the patching that has gone on over time. Here are some elevations of the proposal. The existing is at the bottom, and the proposed is at the top. That's the front. Here are the sides, rear, another side. And here are the proposed finishes. The body is proposed to have this, this dark blue finish, and the trim is proposed to be white. Here are some examples of other arts and crafts buildings in the historic district that historically featured clavoured siding similar to what is being proposed. Here are a few more examples. And then here are some photos of other stucco buildings within the historic districts. And we can always come back to that later. So the second portion of this proposal is to replace the wood windows throughout the front facade with metal clad wood windows, matching the historic configuration. So here are some close up photos of some of those wood windows, and they have modern storms over them, just so you know. Here are some, the sections of a, of a typical metal clad window. And finally, the third portion of this proposal is to install a balcony here on the rear facade. Here it is, close up. And you can see it here in plans. So here's that chimney, and then the proposal is for the, the balcony to sort of span that, that small corner there. There it is again, in the proposed elevation. And you will likely be able to catch a portion of it from this location on the sidewalk, just sort of southwest of the house. And the owner, Pearl Weisel, is here to discuss the appropriateness of the proposal in detail.
Hi, I'm Pearl Weisel, the owner of 807 East 19th Street. I bought this house a year ago, and I guess we've been fixing it up since and dealing with the plans. We got a, you know, it was a, it was in very poor shape when we got it, and we've been working hard to try to preserve it. We've met several of our neighbors on the block, and everybody's really lovely. We're looking forward to moving in and giving this house the care that it really, really needs. So I'd like to go through my proposal. First, I'll start with the windows. You could see the windows on the house have not been maintained. Some ones that you can't even really see from this photo have like broken glass. They've been nailed shut. But all I really want to do is just replace them with the, the same, the metal clad windows, and I'm not changing the look at all. I'm going to keep it exactly how it is. For the next part, I want to talk about the balcony. This is actually, I would say, it's been a long time dream for my husband and me, and it's one thing we've always wanted, just to have a little balcony off of our master bedroom and a little place for us to have a cup of coffee and breathe in the fresh air. And we, and it's just a cute, small little space that will be just for us, and it really should not be very visible from the street. This will be only in the back of the house. Okay, and then the third piece I want to talk about, I know this is the trickiest bit, is the siding. This is, we've had contractors, architects, engineers, everybody come to the house, and we're like, okay, what do we do? The siding is, the stucco that it has is completely deteriorated. You can see slide number five, thank you, Abby. So you can see it's been completely deteriorated. The water, it's all water damaged, all the way down to the wood of the house. And even the area that was patched, which you can see there by the door, looks, even that patch is terrible. And the water is just coming in everywhere. And the house is really, honestly, this part has been completely destroyed. So we discussed this with everybody, architects, engineers, contractors. I asked them, okay, what should we be doing here? And they all said the same thing to me, do not do stucco. Just do not, whatever's on here now, they said, really kind of has to come off, because they have to treat everything that's been water damaged, so we can't even repair it. Everything has to come off. And they said, why are you going to put back on the same material that's going to end up doing the same thing after some time? They said, give it five years, and you're going to see some chipping. The warranty, they said that you get like maybe two to five years, and that won't even cover things like, if my kid throws a ball at the house, not that they would ever do something like that, but if my kid throws a ball at the house and that piece chips off, that's not covered by the warranty. And that would require patching, and patching is not pretty. Let's say it's very, very difficult to match. You could look, please see slide, slide number 12. Here, these are, these are actually on my, my block, some houses that I saw. I'm sorry if any of my neighbors are here, and these are your homes. These are, I just saw some stucco patches, and I wanted to show you, like, this is what a patch looks like. It's very hard to match. So even, and this is what it will look like even after a few years, if you need a patch, then this is what we're going to end up with. And this is basically just the beginning of the process as it begins to deteriorate. And then if you see slide number 13, and this is, you know, just further into the deterioration. You could see here, one of the houses, you could see the stucco peeling, and the other one, you could see actual even just holes, cracks, discoloration. And, and they said, this is why you just really, stucco is just, even when you maintain it, it's just not, it's not a good material to work with. It needs constant maintenance, and even when you maintain it, you're left with those patches. So for those reasons, they told me I should really stick with these James Hardy board siding. This is not like a vinyl siding, it's not flimsy. The warranty is actually 30 years, and it doesn't even require painting or anything like that. It's a very durable material that won't require, they, they said they really don't, don't require any maintenance. And that's kind of what I'm hoping for and what I need right now. With my lifestyle, very busy, I'm a working mom. Somehow, since March, I also became a full-time school teacher. So we want to do as little maintenance as possible, and it should match the look of the other arts and crafts style homes in the neighborhood. I did look into this, if you could, please see slide number 11. And these are some other homes in the neighborhood that do have the siding, so we would do our best to, you know, match the look of the other homes in the neighborhood. So even though, yes, we'd be changing the material, but there are other arts and crafts homes that have the same material. So I do believe we would still be preserving the historic look of the home. I do, I plan and hope to live in this home for many, many years, and I believe these materials will help preserve the look for many years to come. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead, and you'll have to accept the request to unmute yourself. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
How, when was the building, when was your house built? What's the date of construction?
When this house was built originally?
Yes.
I mean, I, the, I wouldn't know exactly, but I would say the architects believe that it's about 100 years old.
Okay, so, and our designation report says that it was built between 1910 and 1920.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
I have a question, I'm sorry, I tried to raise my hand and forgot how to do this. So I just shouted out. Was stucco the original material?
I believe so. I mean, I wouldn't even be surprised if this stucco was the original.
Right, I, I thought it was as, as well. And my next question is, those houses, arts and crafts houses that you were showing in the neighborhood, and said same material, do you actually mean hardy board? Or do you mean painted clapboard?
So I guess I've seen both. There, I've seen some that have hardy board. I know I saw like one on East, like one block over on East 18th Street that did have the actual hardy board. I asked the contractor to give me some addresses for that. So some have the hardy board, and some have regular other kind of siding.
Right, and I guess a question for staff, and
Sorry, it's meant to look like the wood.
No, 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 I, I know the material, I'm just wondering if we have approved it in, in this district before, or was this perhaps before? If this hardy board, was it before this is a, a historic district?
Um, the, the district is, I guess, fairly new. I think it was designated in 2007. So some of these things have occurred prior to designation. I'm not aware of, of one yet that has been approved, but, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. So why don't we see if we have any public testimony? I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Kersavage, our Executive Director, to walk us through the testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you.
Okay, and I'll start with people that signed up. Kelly Carroll. Got you in.
Good morning, Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. HTC had some concern about the proposed facade treatment of this building. While the proposed cladding change from stucco to siding is potentially appropriate for this house and characteristic of this historic district, HTC generally advocates for the retention of historic material and design. We ask that the LPC further investigate this issue before coming to a decisive conclusion. Regardless, the application did not specify the materiality of the siding. I now know what it is from the hearing. Ideally, the new siding should be wood. If a synthetic material is being proposed, which it is, then examples of its approval within the Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District should be furnished as a part of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Next, I'll bring in Dobby Zeitlin. And if you could just unmute yourself, turn on your camera if you choose, and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Dobby Zeitlin. I'm actually, can you see me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, thanks for taking, uh, taking me into the meeting. I'm actually standing with a few Fisk Terrace around the corner from our potential new neighbor. Very exciting to have them. Just to give you a little history about that house, has been neglected in our neighborhood, been rundown for over 10 years, and hasn't been taken care of. It's nice to see, and we heard that our new neighbors are coming in and going to beautify Fisk Terrace and not have an eyesore in the neighborhood. And as we all know, during this financial difficulty, how hard it is with everybody with the, with the, with hard time making a living these days during the pandemic, and they're still working hard to beautify our neighborhood. So we greatly appreciate it. With regards to the stucco, there's very few houses, very few in the neighborhood that have that stucco. And I think there, the clapboards, if they decide, if, if they want that, it will beautify and upgrade the look in Fisk Terrace, no matter what material it's made out of, but it will beautify the neighborhood. And we would all appreciate this beautiful new addition to the block and to the neighborhood. And you can see the other houses behind me, they all have these clapboards and wooden boards. They, as, as long as they look like this, I don't see why. I think they should get a green light with it.
Oh, Sarah, you're muted.
So
Yes. Oh, no, you, no, you were not muted, you just froze for a moment.
Okay, so, did I comment clear?
Yes, we heard it.
You did.
Thank you so much, and appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it. And then our next speaker is Ida Wordiger. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Hi.
There you go. Hi, if you could just state your name for the record?
Ida Wordiger. Yeah, hi, so I live, oh, yeah, I live on the block. Do you see me? I don't see myself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're okay.
Okay, great, I live about five houses down on the block. And I'm really looking forward to the renovation. It's, I've been here for 10 years, and I would say, at least for the last eight years, the house has been neglected and has been falling apart. And I've seen the plans, and I think they look beautiful. The siding looks great. It looks very similar to the three houses I'm looking at outside my window. And the fact that it's made from something more durable, that just makes more sense to me, because I think that like the issue with having these old houses is really the maintenance. So something can look great for a few years, but what's, what's it going to look like in 30 years? You know, what's it going to look like after, you know, in 50 years, when the owners die and it's sold to somewhere else, and, you know, whatever. So I really support that they've put, really, they've, you know, the, the, the things that are available these days were not available 100 years ago. And it makes sense to make use of the latest siding technology, whatever that is. It's not my area, but I really support it, and I think that it looks gorgeous from the view. And I'm really excited for it to happen already. We're waiting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised, so I think we're good on testimony.
Sarah, you're muted.
Rich, do we have any written testimony?
No other additional written testimony, but I will note that Community Board 14 waived review of the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, do you have any final questions? Okay, and just turning to the applicant, are there any final comments you'd like to make before we move to our discussion?
I'd just like to thank you for hearing me, and I'd like to thank the neighbors for supporting me.
Okay, thank you.
One final question, Sarah.
Yes.
What, what was the original roofing material? And what is the current roofing material, and what is the replacement roofing?
So the roofing actually was already approved and replaced already. So this is the, the before photo. We did replace it with charcoal timberline shingles. I did get that already approved by Landmarks. I have the permit, and the work has been completed.
Right, and my question is, what was the original site, uh, roofing material?
It was also some sort of gray shingle, it's just, as you could see, that was mismatched. So they, again, patchwork, so there was gray, dark gray shingles, and then it looks like it was patched with lighter gray shingles.
Right, I'm just asking, and maybe you don't know, but maybe our staff knows what the original material, whether it was actual cedar shingles or wooden shingles, or what it was made of in the 20s.
We believe it's asphalt. We believe it's been
You think so?
That's what we believe.
Yeah, it's actually Yeah, it's actually in some of our early 20th century suburban districts, we have found that even the original material on these houses were sometimes asphalt, not always, but sometimes.
Surprising. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Jefferson, do you have a question?
That historic district, how many buildings are stucco in the district itself, historic district?
We don't have a number on that. We do know there are a few. I don't, I don't want to make a guess, but it would be no more than 20% for sure.
No more than 20%. Thank you.
Right, and I think the other question is, you know, are there houses of this particular style in this district? And I think the applicant showed us that others in this style have clambered, right? So, the arts and crafts style, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
Yes, this is just a follow-up to Commissioner Bland's question, because this is a relatively new district. In the case of other arts and crafts buildings, have we permitted, where the original material was stucco, have we permitted other materials for other buildings in other districts?
I, I know that in other districts, we've approved the, the hardy plank. I'm not sure about this one.
Yes, that's, that's what, that was the nature of my question. Thank you.
We've approved hardy plank to replace wood or hardy plank to replace stucco?
I think typically it's been to replace wood. This, what's, what's a little bit different here is changing the actual nature of the material, you know, from. So when we've approved hardy board, it's been to replicate the original wood, the appearance of the original wood.
Thank you.
This is to change it to a different appearance. Okay, other questions? Okay, so why don't we make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second the motion.
Okay, and let's do the vote on closing the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think that the balcony is fine. I think that the window replacement is fine. I'm troubled by the stucco. I hear what the applicant says. It is true that if you, if you, it is hard to patch stucco well. It requires a real artisan to do it, who knows what they're doing. But in suburban districts like this, even though, I mean, even though there are other examples of arts and crafts houses in wood, this one's not. And this one never was wood. This one, you know, these, these districts rely on diversity and variety for their rhythm. And the fact that, that the district has both stucco and wood, Tudor and arts and crafts and neo, and neo-colonial, you know, these are all contributors to the, to the eclecticism of the district. And I think that, that the loss of the stucco as a replacement material would be significant. I, however, would, would not object, or think it's inappropriate, for the rear tower, where this photograph was taken, I believe, which looks like it either was an addition or it's clearly a kind of a secondary element. That piece could be clad in, in a different material. I would suggest brick, since brick was used on the front facade. We, we generally use hardy, hardy board, like you said, Chair Carroll, as a replacement for wood when there is no other alternative because of fire code regulations. That is not the case here. And I think that the applicant's concern about durability is not particularly a concern that I would share if it's properly installed. I think that, you know, I would say, you know, the majority of the English countryside is, is stucco. The majority of brownstone Brooklyn by now is stucco. So I think that stucco is pretty hardy stuff, so to speak. So I would say that if it's properly installed, stucco should withstand your, your children's baseballs and, and other, other depredations pretty, pretty successfully. But I would accept an alternate material for that one tower if that's where the real problem is, but I think stucco should remain.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
The, if, if I could, I would say that there, one of the pieces of testimony said that they didn't have the, these great materials 100 years ago. In, in fact, that's part of the problem. The, the other irony here is that stucco is made of cement and hardy boards are made of cement. So you are replacing cement with cement. Here, here's the problem with this building. And if you go back to that, the slide that has the tripartite images there, on the left, you can see that a piece of the stucco has fallen away and it has taken the metal lath to which it was applied with it. And on the right, there's an image that shows the stucco pulling away and the, the lath has either rusted away or it's still embedded in the stucco that is pulled away from the house. Here's a problem with, with buildings of this era. Two, two things. There, there was no, there were no expansion and contraction measures that were taken. Now what we do is we put soft joints in the, in the stucco every, every certain number of feet. What happened in these original buildings is that because there's no expansion and contraction mechanism, they, you get what's called map cracking and, and you, you have squares of cracks all around the building. And of course, when, when you have cracks in the stucco, water gets in. When water gets in, it rusts the fasteners and it rusts the lath, okay? And so the, these things by their nature are, are built to eventually deteriorate. Now, what we have are stainless steel fasteners or, or hot dip galvanized fasteners, and we have stainless steel metal lath to which the stucco is applied. And we have the technology now to know that what we have to do is in a building like this, install soft joints to allow those fields of stucco to expand and contract. And so it actually, it, stucco is an incredibly durable material. You know, one, one project that we worked on that I would, would cite, almost 20 years ago, we redid the stucco, same thing with stainless steel lath and stainless steel fasteners at Chesterwood on Daniel Chester French's studio. It is still in perfect condition. And so for me, the, what they should do is take all the stucco off and put new stucco on. It will last another, with stainless steel, it'll last another 150 years. As far as the windows are concerned, I'm, I'm okay with that. And I'm certainly okay with the balcony. Everybody wants to sit and look at their backyard and think about how they have to get the lawn mowed, so. But as far as the stucco is concerned, I think the stucco needs to be replaced with stucco. Sorry to be such a gasp bag, but.
Thank you. No, it's very helpful. Commissioner Chen?
I'll wait to hear the other commissioners' comments.
Okay, Commissioner Bland?
Well, I was about to be persuaded by the testimony by the neighbors, and I want to congratulate, by the way, the owner for bravely coming by herself without an architect, an engineer, or anybody else. I would actually support more of that by this commission, particularly in single-family houses like this. I thought that was a great thing and the neighbors' support was great. And Ita, I think that was her name, I, I really responded to your testimony. However, having just had a masterclass in modern day stucco, where I was heading was to support the hardy plank as an appropriate fake material as opposed to painted wood clapboard, which I think probably is what the other houses in this district that exhibit that kind of material have as opposed to hardy plank. But I was gonna suggest that this house, unlike even the neighbor, I think, whose picture we saw, seemed to suggest wood and stucco together. This is not that kind of a, an articulation. It easily could have been clapboard in the, in the beginning. I, I believe there's nothing particularly outstanding that says this must be stucco, other than the fact that it was stucco. So I was prepared to go down that path. But having had the masterclass recently, three minutes ago, I'm sort of on the fence as well. So I think I could go with the hardy plank, but it was pretty persuasive hearing, hearing modern day stucco. My experience with stucco, and it's limited to be sure, is that in the northern climes, and maybe I'm wrong here, and on lath, on wood, is a very poor, a poor material. Stucco on brick may be better, is what I thought. And of course, stucco down in, in Miami is terrific. It works forever. But nonetheless, there I am and kind of wait to hear a few other people speak up.
Commissioner Letfy?
Hi. So I definitely want to thank the applicant for what you're doing with this building. It is so admirable and we, as the commission, I know, are so happy that you are putting a tremendous amount of work and TLC into this building to make it an attractive and wonderful addition to this block, to this neighborhood. And it's, it's going to reclaim, when it's done, it's going to reclaim its rightful place within this historic district. So, thank you. I'm so glad that Commissioner Devonshire has spoken because I really always, in terms of the stucco issue, I, I always defer to him on his knowledge of materiality and what works and doesn't work. In the ideal world, I think it would be great if this could be a stucco facade. And after hearing Commissioner Devonshire, I feel very comfortable with it. I wasn't originally feeling that terrific about stucco when the applicant first presented her case. So I'm in favor of stucco. I'm okay with the windows. I'm also okay with the balcony. And again, I want to thank the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm okay with the balcony. I'm okay with the windows. And I'm okay with the stucco.
All right, so you are not supportive of the proposal to change the material from stucco to another material?
Good, I'm for keeping it stucco.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I, I like Fred, have had my mind changed, I think, by Commissioner Devonshire and Goldblum's discussion about the ways in which the stucco could, could last and, and is, is achievable. But I, I'm confused about why it is that all of the input that the applicant has received has been against it. And I'm, this is sort of a separate subject, wondering if we may be at the commission, and, and I think that you've already done so much on this. Commissioner Carroll is, is to, to provide best practice guides on this, because this is confusing. I mean, if, if in fact, the, the methodology is of using stainless steel is, is available and it's curious why it is that the, that the applicant wouldn't have that guidance, you know, in the real world and on the site. And so I'm, I'm troubled by that, but I guess I would say here that I would not approve of the application and, and in sort of stucco for this project.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think that the balcony and the windows are appropriate and can be approved. And I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Devonshire on the stucco. And I think that not only the correct installation of the stucco, but proper flashing around openings is crucial and can be very effective in making this building a new, you know, a new stucco facade last over 100 years.
Great. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I want to also thank the applicant and the neighbors for their testimony, which was, you know, very, you know, very convincing and helpful. But at the same time, I also was waiting for Commissioner Devonshire and Commissioner Goldblum to speak about the stucco because I was, having listened to the original testimony, I was thinking, well, if stucco is that much of a problem, maybe we should permit replacing it as other changes have been made by owners over time to deal with particular issues. But having heard that stucco is in fact a, a very reasonable material for the situation, if it's properly applied with expansion soft joints and stainless steel lath and bolts, that it will be, it will be successful and last for the owner. I feel that I, I can't approve the change of material. The other things, the windows, the balcony, everything else is something I could absolutely approve. But I guess the only thing we didn't hear was whether there was some reason that this was a cost prohibitive solution, but I suspect that's not the case compared to the hardy board. And that the advice that unfortunately the applicant's been getting is from people who perhaps are not so experienced with stucco application. I don't know what the reasons are for that, but anyway, that's, I, I think I cannot approve the stucco with this. I mean, I can approve the stucco, cannot approve substituting it at this point since there is a way to do it successfully and that will last for the applicant.
Okay, so I think that the majority of the commissioners are supportive of the window and the balcony, but not with the component of the application to change the facade material. And so we would approve the window and the balcony, deny the proposal for the hardy board, and they can work with the staff on a staff level approval for new stucco. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion?
Sure. Hold on a second. There we go. Hey, regarding 807 East 19th Street in the Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District, the application is to replace siding and windows and install a balcony. I recommend approval with modifications. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and aesthetic character of the Fisk Terrace Midwood Park Historic District. With regard, so I'm not going to talk about the siding.
We can deny the siding, so.
So with regard to the replacement.
Yeah, yeah.
Denial. Finding that the stucco cladding is a significant feature in this historic district, that this building is one of the few remaining arts and crafts style houses that feature stucco cladding. Therefore, its removal will detract from the house and historic district. And that the proposed replacement composite clapboard siding will not match historic cladding in terms of material details, finish, and will alter the historic character of the house. With regard to replacement windows and installation of a balcony, I recommend approval. Finding that the replacement of the windows and the installation of the balcony will not eliminate damage. will not eliminate damage or conceal any significant features of the building, that the replacement windows will match historic windows in terms of configuration, operation, details, and finish. That because the house is set back from the street, the proposed change in material of the windows, of the window sashes, from wood to aluminum clad wood, will not be perceptible from public thoroughfares, and that the proposed balcony will be small in size, simply designed, will be only minimally visible from a public thoroughfare at a distance and from an oblique angle.
Okay. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay. With ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay. So that we've taken that motion, and the applicant should just continue to work with the staff, and they can provide guidance and advices as you move toward replacing the stucco on your facade. Thank you.
All right. The next item are, it's actually two items that I'm going to read into the record together, since they'll be presented together. So the first one is item number two, docket number 21-01234, 175 Fifth Avenue, the Flatiron Building, an individual landmark also in the Ladies Mile Historic District, Grove Manhattan, Block 851, Lot 1. The application is for a certificate of appropriateness. Boozard-style skyscraper designed by D.H. Burnham and Company and built in 1902 to 03. The application is to replace entrance and fill, modify the penthouse, and install mechanical equipment at the roof. And the next item is docket number 21-0537, the same address, same landmark. The application is for a certificate of appropriateness. And also, the description is a Boozard-style skyscraper designed by D.H. Burnham and Company and built in 1902 to 03. The application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of storefronts and louvers.
Okay. And I'd like to just note for the record that Commissioner Bland is recused on this item, and of course, item number three as well.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Please state your name for the record, or you may begin. You have control of the presentation.
Okay. I'm Richard Metzke from Byer Blum &amp; Bell. I'm joined with Gaspary Malik, an associate, in my office. The Flatiron Building actually celebrated its 118th birthday on October 1st, and it was built by the George Fuller Company back in 1902. Our challenge was to really fine-tune some of the building elements, make some adjustments adapted to its present and future needs, while at the same time, you know, remaining highly respectful of the architectural integrity of this landmark. If you've passed by the building recently, you'll notice that eight out of all of the 612 window AC units have been removed. There's currently ongoing local law 11 facade repair, and that also includes the cleaning and restoration of the terracotta and limestone facade. That work will be completed in 2021. What you cannot see is a sort of full-gut renovation of the interior, with all-new HVAC systems being installed, new emergency egress stairs, fire protection, upgraded elevating systems, and new bathrooms. There are four components to our presentation this morning. One is the sort of lobby entry on Fifth and Broadway, a storefront master plan, alterations to the 21st floor, and new mechanical equipment on the roof. The building was designated back in 1966, and it is within the Ladies Mile Historic District. The Fuller Company hired Daniel Burnham as its architect. Frederick Dinkelberg, in his office, became the designer of the building. And I just put up seven other examples that were of new buildings that were going up by the Burnham Company. At the same time, all these buildings were actually designed by Dinkelberg. You'll just see that the composition of these buildings are actually very similar to the Flatiron. Just a view up top, top left of the site prior to construction. On the right, top right are two renderings from the October issue of architectural record just prior to the building's opening, and the bottom photos are of construction. In 1905, a 21st floor was added. It was more of a utilitarian shed structure. It was rented out to, for artist studios. Many of those artists actually worked for some of the publishers that were in the building at that time. The first major renovation to the building actually happened in about 1952 and 1953. The original lobby was demolished. It had a vaulted ceiling at that time, and this more sort of austere, modern, it was replaced by this austere, modern lobby. We talked about the building was designated back in 1966. And then the second major renovation actually occurred in 1985, 1986, which actually was completely the opposite of what was there from 1952. But the vaulted, the idea of the vaulted ceiling was brought back into the lobby. So the first component is basically the entries in the building on both Fifth Avenue and on Broadway. These are two views of the existing lobby from Fifth and from Broadway. In fact, the revolving doors and the side doors were from the 1952 renovation. But you can see from here that now it's all clear glass right up to the vaulted ceiling in the lobby. This is a view from 1911, looking at the original store, original portal entry. There were two center doors, two side doors. You had this metal screen in front of the windows, and I think the, probably one of the most important elements in that sort of composition of the portal itself was the horizontal transom identifying the Fuller Building, but that transom, in fact, picked up the top of the storefronts, the bay windows and the storefronts that surround the entire building. Just a comparison, on the left is the Fifth Avenue entry from 1911. The middle one was the renovation of 52, and the one to the right was the renovation from 1985. On the left is the lobby, the existing lobby. On the right is proposed. If we go back to the existing lobby, you'll see the two revolving doors, two side doors. Those side doors are only about 2 feet 4 inches in width. This building is not ADA compliant at the moment. If you actually were in a wheelchair, you would have to go through the loading dock, which is adjacent to the Broadway entry, top of the page, just to the right of that entry, and then you would enter into an elevator. Building will now be ADA compliant. On the right is our proposed lobby. We will have a vestibule off of Fifth Avenue, double set of doors. We also need that for egress. We'll have a revolving door on the Broadway side, but we're going to move the revolving door into the lobby. Right now, both the revolving doors are half in and half out. This is the view of our proposed entry. We wanted something that was, an entry that was very contemporary and, but still feels substantial. We wanted to really sort of maximize the sense of transparency and light into a very small lobby space. We felt that the vaulted ceiling was probably the most important element within the lobby. I think it gives us sort of very confined, short space, a spatial quality that we want to be, that wants to be visible, both the sidewalk and the street, especially at night. As I had mentioned earlier, I think the transom is probably one of the most important elements in terms of this portal. And we feel that horizontal band sort of really defines the entry and in a sense reinforces the storefront bay-window line that surrounds the entire building. This is a view on the left, elevation view from Fifth Avenue. On the right is a view, if you were in the lobby, looking back to Fifth Avenue and to the vestibule. The lobby interior will be very, actually, very similar to what was originally there in terms of its panelization, its materiality, its colors. But the most important aspect, I think, of the lobby is its vaulted coffered ceiling. And I think that really helps the spatial quality of this extremely small lobby. And we think the visibility through the space from Fifth Avenue to Broadway, or from Broadway to Fifth Avenue, is extremely important. A comparison of the original on the left, and I just wanted to note, you know, the size of those doors. Originally, the double doors were about 2 feet 8 inches in width. The side door was about 2 feet 6. The existing door currently is about 2 feet 4 inches, right? And, and our proposal on the right side. This is a view of the Broadway entry of the revolving door that we've pushed back into the building. So the composition itself is very similar to Fifth Avenue, and the importance of that transparency and being able to view that coffered ceiling from the sidewalk and from the street, especially at night. And then we did an elevation from Broadway, looking at that entry portal, and a view inside the lobby, looking back out towards Broadway. A comparison from what was original on the left-hand side to is existing today, to our proposal on the right-hand side. This is a section on top of the existing lobby, and you can see the two revolving doors, one on Fifth Avenue, one on Broadway. Our proposal is at the bottom of the sheet, below it, showing the vestibule off of Fifth Avenue, the revolving door on the Broadway side. In terms of the transom, we will replicate the original transom's basic profiles and its dimensions. And we'll do the same thing on the Broadway side. Again, we showed the original, it's all the way to the left, proposed in the middle, but we will replicate those basic profiles and dimensions on the Broadway side also. So the next component would be a retail storefront master plan. The views up top show the, are from architectural record back in 1902. What was interesting is all the glass storefronts were to be flat. They weren't built that way. In fact, they either changed or were built very quick or were changed out very, very quickly to these bay windows. And so you can see some of the photos back from 1902 and 1903, showing those bay storefronts. Some additional photos up top from 1905 and 1908, showing the bay windows on bay storefronts on both sides, and two photos down below from 1911. This building had a 1,500-seat restaurant in its cellar. The access to that restaurant was from two bays. And if you look at the lower left and lower right, and if you go in one bay, you'll see a canopy on both sides, on both Fifth Avenue and both on Broadway. That storefront was changed out to be a flat storefront with a double set of doors on both sides. That was the access to the restaurant down below. Other views through the years, 1913, just showing the storefronts itself. Each of these storefronts were bay windows, and they each had a side door to them. A view from 1973. In fact, if you look at the center photograph, that was where the entry off of Fifth Avenue was to the, to the restaurant down below. All of these storefronts have undergone, every single storefront except for one, and I'll show you which one, has undergone significant changes through the years. In fact, this storefront, one in the middle and one on the other side, have gone through four different changes over the years. So significant changes have occurred throughout the building in terms of all its storefronts. Just a view from 77, from Broadway, and a view back on 1989 from Fifth Avenue. Back that storefront we were just talking about is the second one. If you look at the lower photo, it's sort of in the middle. So the original plan showed flat storefronts, right? And there were 23 storefronts. It's storefront number 16 on the upper right-hand corner, which was probably the closest one to the original. All the other storefronts, 22 of these storefronts, were all changed over the years, whether it was once or twice, in some cases, four different times. Each of these storefronts are actually shown with a, with a door. So, you know, originally, they had planned the ground floor to have obviously multiple retailers. An elevation from Fifth Avenue, looking at the storefronts, and you can see basically, you know, there were highly repetitive sort of storefronts, all with doors on the sides. 22nd Street, flat storefronts, again, were planned ironically. These were actually changed out to bay windows, and in fact, then changed back to flat storefronts. And again, the same view from the Broadway view, then again, the same basic storefront components. This is the plan, what it looks like today. We just counted each of the storefronts, and we just numbered them. And you can see a variety of different types of storefronts that are in the building. It was storefront number eight and storefront number 17 were the ones that were altered as the entry to the restaurant down below. It was storefronts 11, and 11, 12, 13, and 14 on 22nd Street that were, that became bay storefronts that were now, then, were at some point converted back to flat storefronts. And a view of Fifth Avenue, looking at the photograph of the existing storefronts as they are today, and then the drawing down below. What you'll notice is there's a couple of different types of storefronts, and we'll go into those types in a second. But we also documented 22nd Street and Broadway in terms of its entries. I just wanted to note, storefront number 19 was converted to actually their loading dock. At some point, the doors were taken out, a set of double doors. It was replaced by a set of double doors that were set back into the building. Now, there are about four, four or five storefronts that have the original configuration, and that's shown on the left-hand side, the bay window, the door itself, right? So you found that storefront, 6, 7, 9, 16, and 17. They were basically the original configuration of these, of these storefronts. 16 is in the best condition at the moment. Now, there are other storefronts, as an example, 8, storefront 8 and 18 have a sidelight. These storefronts were modified in the mid-19 or late 1990s to have that sidelight adjacent to the door, which created ADA access into that retail store. So this became an important change back in the sort of mid-to-late 1990s. And you see it on two of these storefronts, which were done well. There's two other ones, which are actually attached, attached to the Sprint store. They were botched and not as good as the one that was done, that we're showing right here. Right. As part of the master plan, we would also like to have louvers above these storefronts in the transom. Today, there are two full-height louvers which flank the entries on both Fifth Avenue and Broadway. So if you look at the top drawing, you'll see two full louvers within the transoms, flanking the Fifth Avenue entry. And on the bottom, there are two full louvers that are flanking the Broadway entry. On top, on the storefronts on both Fifth Avenue and Broadway, we would like to include a smaller louver, about 2 feet 5 inches in dimension. And if you look at the middle drawing, which is 22nd Street, we'd like to include new full-height transom louvers. We need the louvers, because we have about 10,000 square feet of retail space in the basement that we would like to be able to utilize. That was the old restaurant space. In order to do that, we need fresh air and exhaust. We need to bring it through these storefronts. We're also going to have a generator in the sub-basement, so we need exhaust space for that machinery. This is just a blow-up of those two types. One would be, type one would be above the typical sort of storefronts. Type two would be the ones that would be on 22nd Street, and that's very, that basically replicates what is currently the louvers that flank the entries on both Fifth and on Broadway. In terms of the master plan, as new retailers come in, if they want to, they will need ADA-compliant entries. And what we'd like to do is replace those storefronts that are not ADA-compliant with ones that are ADA- with ones that are ADA compliant, very similar to storefronts eight and eighteen, which were done exceedingly well. So this is the plan of that change. All the profiles would be would match exactly what is there today. And in fact, what was interesting about what happened in late nineteen nineties, and we would follow the same methodology, is that these things were basically this, the storefronts could be basically dismantled. The material could be cut, it could be saved, and it could be salvaged. And storefronts could be reassembled. It's the way they did, the way they handled the storefronts in the nineties. They look absolutely terrific. You can't tell that there was any change to them except for the side light itself. But that same methodology in terms of dismantling and reassembling, we would use for any changes that we make to storefronts. We're also proposing a set of double doors, right? And they would be limited to one bay per facade, three pairs total max. And the location of those double doors would be limited to these highlighted storefront bays that are in the plan to the right. So there could be one double set of doors, flat facade would be either eighteen, seventeen or eighteen. One that could be possibly either seven or eight or one on Twenty Second Street, which could be twelve or thirteen. Now storefronts eight and seventeen were the ones that did have flat facades with double doors that were used as the entry to the restaurant. Because we've got about ten thousand square feet down below, because of the egress requirements for that space, we're going to need a set of double doors. But I'm not sure whether at this point it's going to be located on Fifth or on Broadway, right? There's also the possibility that retail space could be split. There might be a chance that there is a requirement for a double door on Fifth and a double door on Broadway if we split the space. On storefronts twelve and thirteen, there might be a tenant that comes into the building that takes quite a bit of space that wants its own private lobby. Right? That private lobby would be off of Twenty Second Street. It would come in on twelve or thirteen and would be connect back into the elevator core. Just a view down below, this is the retail. This, that entire floor was actually a fifteen hundred seat restaurant at one time. It says retail A, that's storage space that's currently used by Sprint. Ninety five hundred of that cellar space is currently available. This, the top view is basically existing. The bottom demonstrates how some of these storefronts might be changed out. So as an example, if you look at on the right storefront number oh seven, right? That one could possibly be either, you know, a flat facade with a double set of doors or it could possibly go into storefront number, number eight. If you look at the one adjacent to it, number nine, right? You'll see right above, number nine doesn't have that eighteen inch side light. And so the opportunity exists if needed by retailer for an ADA compliant entry, that that could be their door. So this just demonstrates the placement of the possible replacement of the, some of these existing storefronts that don't have a side light to the ones that would have a side light and ADA compliant entries. And then on Twenty Second Street, you know, whether it's twelve or thirteen, might in future be changed out as a as a secondary lobby to the building, to the building core. And the same methodology back on Broadway. If you look at, you know, seventeen or eighteen, one of those two might be converted over to a entry for retail down below. And then there's the possibility, if you look at sixteen, right, that or seventeen, those two might be converted in the future by a retailer for the need for ADA access to to our proposed side light storefront. The materials both on the entry, on both the entry and the storefronts themselves, the entries would all be formed bronze doors. And the transom would be would be bronze. All the storefronts are steel right now. They remain steel and they're all painted black. So the next component the changes that we're pursuing for the the building would be on twenty first floor. And as we mentioned, it's not original, it was built in nineteen oh five, but here's a view of it prior to it being built. The rooftop view with the mechanical equipment, it has a series of skylights at that time. A view of the roof today with its mechanical, there are some bulkheads and mechanical equipment currently on the roof. The skylights that were there are now all boxed over. Just a view of the the building itself or that sort of more utilitarian shed that was built back in nineteen oh five. And you can see the mechanical equipment that was on that roof. The plan of that twenty first floor back in nineteen oh five. Just a view on the left of the building without the twenty first floor and a recent photograph of the twenty first floor. And if anybody's actually looked up at the building, you'll see this whole series of these it's telephone equipment that is surrounding the entire rooftop of that of that floor. Right? This is the current plan of the twenty first floor. And then because of the changes that we are making to the infrastructure of the building, it opens up a lot more space up there, becomes far more efficient, new stairs, new elevator, and that would come up and bathrooms and a new terrace space that could be utilized. Just the inside view of that space today. A view of one of the typical floors, all these windows were replaced, actually all the windows in the building were replaced back in two thousand and four. And our proposal is to actually lower the, keep the same width windows, but lower them an additional two feet to bring in more more light and also to maximize the views out to the city beyond the balustrade. A view of currently existing condition in the windows. A view of our proposal in terms of creating a new terrace space. Terrace would be on pedestals, it's level with the floor that would be inside the twenty first floor. New rails, because there's more than a four inch gap in that and that balustrade all the way to the left. We would then put in a very simple glass rail. What we want to do at the brow of the building is to actually shape it like the building itself and round out the corner. All the telephone equipment that's on the building would all be removed. And you can see how the terrace has been lifted up. Just a view of the existing condition today. And a view of the proposed moving down the windows and and creating the the balustrade. The one thing that I want to mention that I'll show you in one minute is there's currently a roof line and you can see the gutter on top of the roof. We are going to raise the power pit eighteen inches and I'll explain why in in one minute. Right? Sorry. Just a view of the elevation existing up up on top, proposed down on the bottom. All the same windows, same rhythm of windows, none of that on the twenty first floor would change. A view from Twenty Second Street, a view from Broadway. And this shows the brow of the building and the change. The existing plan is on the left, proposes on the right in terms of rounding out that corner. Just a typical elevation, existing on top, proposed on the bottom. Existing elevation of the brow as it currently exists to the to the left and in the middle, our proposal. And then to the power pit itself, if you look all the way to the left, you'll see the existing condition. There's no insulation in this building. It was really built as a shed. And that the roof currently rainwater goes into the gutter system through downspouts and then it goes right out into that terrace. What we want to do is add a power pit. We want, we need to add rigid insulation on top of the existing roof. And we are going to then drain internally through the building. Our sort of coping would be that five inch coping would be same dimension is actually the the gutter to the left, because that's a good sharp line around the top of the entire twenty first floor. We're going to add new insulation in the building itself, a new stucco finish to the building and then bad insulation between the metal studs. That's around the twenty first floor. Just a view of of the twenty first floor. It has a stucco finish. It will remain stucco, it will remain the same color it is currently currently is. New windows, those windows would be aluminum painted that that sort of copper color. And then the glass rail to the to the left. The last component is the rooftop mechanical equipment. Because of all, because of a brand new HVAC system throughout the entire building, we would have cooling towers on the roof. So the drawing on the left is the existing condition, the one on the right is the proposed. We worked very closely with other mechanical engineers to try to find the smallest cooling towers that would still work for this building. And we strategically located them to minimize any view of this equipment from Madison Square Park. So just a blow up of that rooftop, there are some flues, boiler flues that come up, other equipment and the cooling, the three cooling towers themselves. A section through that twenty first floor, looking at the rooftop. The top is the existing condition. You can see the mechanical equipment and bulkhead equipment that's there today that measures about nine feet, three inches from the top of the pitch of the roof. Our mechanical, new mechanical equipment will not exceed nine feet, three inches from the roof. So it won't exceed the height that the equipment that's on the roof today is. And then views both the existing mechanical equipment on the roof, proposed on the bottom. So the mechanical equipment is generally in the same location as it is today. We moved it actually further away from Twenty Second Street to start to minimize some of the use you'd see on Fifth Avenue. But we pushed it, we pushed it slightly to the east to really minimize any views of this equipment from the park. And then a view of the Broadway elevation. A cut of the mechanical equipment. And then we did a whole series of views around the entire building. Just to explain the methodology, the drawing on the left is the existing condition. The one on the, the one in the middle is our proposed. The one on the right is the mockup. And if you look right at the mockup drawing all the way to right and look down, you'll see that sort of green screening. That green screening is the power pit that we would raise up eighteen inches. We also colored all the mechanical equipment red. So if you go back to the left hand side existing condition, if you look all the way up top, right there, you'll, you can see a little corner of that existing bulkhead. In fact, in our proposal, you don't see, you wouldn't see anything. And then what we did is we started just going around the park. This is from the middle of the park. And again, you can see the equipment all the way on the on the left. We've minimized and you don't see any of the equipment on the on our proposal. And then we just sort of moved back to Fifth Avenue, looking back at the building. You don't see any equipment there. Going further back on Fifth Avenue existing, you see a little bit of it. You don't see any in our proposal. Moving closer to the building, you don't see any of the equipment. Going down some of the side streets, this was twenty third, looking east. You see a little bit of the flu in the center. And then you see some of the equipment on some of these side streets, they'll both, you'll see it on both twenty second and twenty third. You'll see a little bit of it pop up. Another view. As you get closer, you won't, you won't see anything. Views from Twenty Second Street looking east, existing and proposed. Twenty Second Street, none as you get closer to the building. Then we went on Fifth Avenue and you're down at about Twenty Street, looking back. Existing equipment, we've moved it further back or further north. So to minimize any view of it further down Fifth Avenue, even further down Fifth Avenue. And then we went to Broadway, you don't see anything on Broadway of any of the equipment. And then we looked down some of the other side streets looking west. Looking west and you can see the, some of the existing, we've moved it further back. And again, on Twenty Second Street. And then closer up. And then we moved back to the park, you're on twenty third, you're on twenty third, just at the park. The brow of the building, this is Twenty Fourth Street at the park. You can see the existing equipment on the, all the way on the left. And you barely see any middlely, you can see at the bottom photo, you just see a little bit of a corner of some of the equipment. And then further way back on the corner of Madison Square Park existing, existing on the, all the way on the left, proposed in the middle, we've been able to make it minimally visible and that was it. So we're through. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Is there any reason why the double door proposals in the storefront are centered as opposed to being on one side or the other?
No, I just thought it was probably the most appropriate location for them. Right? And I think just seemed to work for, you know, retail.
And will there be no antennae on this building from here?
No antennas. So all the antennas will be removed.
And is there any signage as part of this proposal?
There's no signage right now. I think staff has been handling the signage on the buildings, which are all set back about eighteen inches in the transoms.
Okay. And last question, the stucco color, why did you choose that particular stucco color for the top floor?
It was the best match that we had to the color that was actually on the existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I'm just curious if there, if the interior coffering was in the historic condition and if there were any drawings of that interior.
Yes, there is. We saw the original, we have the original drawings. That carpeted ceiling that we are proposing actually is very similar to the dimensions and proportions of the original coffered ceiling.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson. You'll just have to accept the request to unmute.
Two questions on page thirty, twenty eight and thirty nine. You have two types of existing storefronts. If you go to that.
Okay.
So the, the, the new storefront, the existing storefronts have opening the the doors are three foot six.
Right. So the original doors.
That's the existing, correct?
Yeah, the original doors on the building were forty two, forty two inches.
Correct. Just let me guess, that's enough for handicap. Accessibility. So why, why did you change it to the, add another light?
So there, there, there's a history of these changes that were occurring with some of these doors in the store for the retailer. So we wanted that option to exist to change them out to have that side light. There's four of those storefronts that currently have the side light. And we wanted to leave that option open. Whether they're, whether those, you know, new storefronts would be utilized or not, I don't know. You know, these could remain in place.
Just one thing, we, the side light is the eighteen inch clear side light is required by handicap code, which the forty two inch doors do not have. So even though the forty two inch doors are wide enough for a for a wheelchair, they do not have the clear side space required by handicap for a pull or a push side.
Okay. And Mr. Malik, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is because I'm Gaspary Malik with BBB.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I did not know that.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions at this time. We may have more later, but let's move to public testimony. So if you're here in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we will begin with people who signed up in advance. And I'll turn it over to Lisa Kersavage to walk us through the testimony.
Okay, and we have two people sign up to speak. I see two hands raised. So Mark Bench, I'm going to start with you. And Mark, if you can just unmute yourself, turn on your camera if you choose, and then state your name for the record.
Good morning. Can you see me? Hear me? Excellent. I am Mark Bench, Chair Carroll, and Commissioners, a very good morning to you. Founded in New York City in nineteen sixty six, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation. and preservation of our 19th, early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors and civic art. We oppose the adoption of the master plan for the storefronts at the Flatiron Building as currently proposed. The original historic storefronts are well documented and the master plan should more closely reflect the historic design. First, the proposed ubiquitous transom louvers are destructive of the character of the storefronts and the whole of the ground floor of the building. The full height louvers destroy the lofty transparency of the original storefront transoms and the partial height louvers create an inappropriate and nonhistoric horizontal division. We suggest looking to creative mechanical engineering solutions and/or architectural design to address ventilation requirements. Second, the introduction of side lights with heavy vertical mullions adjacent to each of the storefront entrance doors destroys the entire proportions of the storefronts. It appears these side lights are being proposed for accessibility reasons, but providing automatic door actuators would eliminate the requirement for space adjacent to the door pull and the need for the side lights. Third, reconfiguration of bays seven, 13 and 18 to double door entries is inappropriate as it appears to have no historic precedent and seems counter to the point of the master plan to bring historic consistency to the storefronts over time. Finally, to enhance the proposed new building entry in Philip Broadway and Fifth Avenue, we recommend returning the long missing metal Roman lattice to the arches and transoms. This feature, so typical and iconic in buildings of this age and style, would help preserve the prominence and architectural character of the historic entrances. With the other restorative work proposed for the entrances, now is the time to complete the design. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. The Flatiron Building is one of the most iconic skyscrapers in New York City. Entrances on buildings of this vintage were not simply a way in, they were an announcement. Flatiron's celebrational presence on the street has been diminished over the years via alterations to its entries, particularly the loss of its bronze grills, spandrel and therefore original proportions. This is an individual landmark and Daniel Burnham's drawings of the original entries provide a compelling argument to take the restorative route. While the return of the spandrel is welcome, its heaviness floats alone without the visual bracing of the Roman lattices. This classical feature is so of its time and belongs back on this bizarre masterpiece. The vertical divisions in the original grills all correlated to a rusticated course within the arch, resolving the large half moon shaped space above the doorways. HDC asks that the commission examine storefronts numbered number seven, 13 and 18, which are proposed to introduce a double centered door and eliminate the projecting bay, a feature which, which characterizes this ground floor and is present in the 1903 photographs. Like the entries, a restorative approach for the storefronts is ideal, considering the stature of the architect, the building and its designation. The louvers need further study prior to being approved as a part of a master plan as they currently occupy too much frontage on this building's facades. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
All right, thank you. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from Community Board Five recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Richard, would you like to respond to some of the comments? We've heard comments about for the storefront master plan, the louvers, the side lights adjacent to doors in lieu of automatic doors. And then we've also heard comments about the entryways and the design of the grill work.
Right, so let's start with the entryway. We felt that we wanted something that felt very transparent, very open. The lobby itself is very confined and very small. It was important to us actually that you'd be able to see through that lobby, especially its ceiling, its vaulted ceiling from all the way from Fifth Avenue to Broadway or from Broadway to Fifth Avenue. That idea of that sort of galleria through the building, we thought was important in order to give it a really beautiful spatial quality. You wouldn't get, if you, if you went back to the grill work, I would, I, I think it would distract from any views through, through the building. You wouldn't be able to see the ceiling. And I think it would also create a very dark lobby. So I think what was important to us was something that was highly transparent, lots of light coming in and, and something that really felt very spatial. So I, I, I don't think you'd get that quality if you, if you, if you went back to placing in those, the grill work and especially the proportion of the grill work in the original doors. Those doors were very, very narrow and, and small. So I think our proposal, I think is more sort of in keeping with the scale of the building itself and, and the need to keep that lobby as, as, as open and transparent as possible. In terms of the side light, we need the side light for, for ADA compliance. It doesn't mean that all those storefronts would be changed, all the original storefronts would be changed out. If there was a future retailer who wanted, who needed an ADA door in a location of one of the original bays, then they, then, then this plan gives them the flexibility to change that out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? All right, not, oh yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
I just want to be clear. Is it, do you need to have the side lights? Or can you have another system for opening up that?
We need the side light.
I'm still meat code.
We need, we need the side light. Yeah, we need that 18 inches on the pull side.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Commissioners, I'm going to start requesting to unmute you all so that we can make a motion to close the hearing. And Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Holford Smith, would you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed and we'll begin our discussion. And so we have two applications before us with multiple components. So the first application is for the master plan for the storefronts and louvers. And the second application is for the changes to the building entries, the penthouse and the swapping out of mechanical equipment on the roof of the penthouse. So Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start on this one?
Sure. I think that the changes to the front entry make a lot of sense. And while I might have agreed with testimony about restoring the grill, I can also approve it in this form. Given the fact that I think that we will see the coffering through, through the glass and that sort of animates it. It's not, not exactly enough, but, but I think it's, it's all right. And, and does justice, I think, to the scale of that entry to lift the entry door. I can support what's going on on the roof as well, the mechanical equipment, the parapet. All of that, I think, is, is going to be all right. I, I do still have a few questions, I think, about the storefronts, but I'd love to hear other people's thinking. I mean, I think as much as possible, the projected bays should be restored or replaced where they don't exist right now. I, but I, but I think that there, the applicant's being, is trying to be as sensitive as possible to the materiality and the, and the kind of the proportion of the system. So I, I could support it, but I'd like to hear a little bit more from others about the storefront systems.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Um, well, I think the, I'll start with the, the rooftop. I think the changes to the rooftop addition are an improvement. I think that they're appropriate and I think raising the parapet height will help to hide the equipment on the roof. I would suggest that perhaps the applicant works with the staff to make sure that the stucco color is, is appropriate and not too bright, which it kind of reads a little bit bright in some of the renderings. But I think overall that will be an improvement to the building. As for the building entrance, I, I definitely understand testimony regarding the return of the bronze grill work. But I think due to the change in proportion of the doors, that that would, you couldn't really recreate it successfully. But I'm, I'm just wondering if you could not bring back the grill, but perhaps bring back the mullions just to tie in the design back to the rustication that, that surrounds the arch. I think they could look at that. The storefronts, I understand the, the need for ADA. I, I do wonder if it would be possible to eliminate the side light by doing power assist doors. I know that might be an added expense, but I think that it would eliminate that additional side light. And I also understand the double door, the need for egress, but I'm wondering if the best solution is a pair of doors. And perhaps since historically the storefronts always had the door to one side, that perhaps the doors would be to be split, one to each side. And I, I don't know if there's enough room to make a projecting bay in between, might be, might be too narrow. Nothing that might be, want to be studied a little bit further. And I think those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I, I really think that the grill should be returned over the the entry doors. And as far as the interior lighting situation, that could be dealt with, with something in the molding, perhaps. There's something in the, in the interior. To me, having the, the external grill work is more important than being able to see the interior vault through the, through the window. So I, and I think that's an important feature of the original building and needs to be returned. With regard to the changes on the roof, I think they're really all positive. I, I won't even just comment on them because I think all are really a good move in the right direction. So I could totally approve everything that's being done there. With regard to the storefronts, I think the use of the black metal is fine. I, I do have some concern about the heaviness of the louvers that are being installed in so many locations, particularly the full louvers. And I, I certainly sympathize with the need to create adequate ventilation. That's extremely important in the current climate and probably going into the future. But I'm wondering if there isn't some better way to achieve that. And I'd like to hear from other Commissioners on that, that score. With regard to the side lights, it is really making a significant change. And they probably could really deal with that with a push button. Now that's obviously going to have to be on the exterior and that's an issue. So I'm interested in hearing other Commissioners' view on the side lights as well. But you know, this is a master plan. We are looking for what is the ideal going forward? And while we, we permit a lot of change in storefronts, absolutely. We want to have something that is the best for this building for the future, for the future in this master plan. So as I said, I'd like to hear a little more on that, on those issues, the louvers and the side lights from other Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. I'm generally with Ann on this. I think that a lot of what she said was completely correct and I would, I would agree with. In terms of the rooftop addition, I'm concerned about the color. The brightness tends to mute the reading of the silhouette, you know, the kind of crenellated silhouette against the skyline. So I think that a darker color, you know, without being too dark, something that would allow for the reading of the silhouette of, of the building is very important. So I think that that's something that they can work on with staff. I think that the main entrances, since the applicant has chosen to do a historicizing rest, kind of recreation with the moldings with the material, I think that the reintroduction of at least the mullions, at least a tripartite kind of thermal window or the quadrupartite that's shown in the, in the original photographs is something that we can request that they do. I don't think we can request, we can compel them to put back the grill work, but I think it would be a good idea for them to consider it. Because I think one of the people who offered testimony suggested it that if you, if you reintroduce the grill work at the entry, you can use the grill work to conceal the extensive areas of, of ventilation on the, on the bays flanking the entry and on the bays on 22nd Street, where you have full, full louvers. I think that the partial louvers are fine and they really will kind of fade into the background. But I think for those, for those, for those bays that have the full louvers, it's kind of a, it's a very significant visual imposition. I think that the regularity of this building's three dimensional storefronts is, is one of the very unique ways that it hits the ground. So I think that to the extent that we can keep the rhythm, the more, the better. To that extent, I'm, I personally am fine with the side lights. I believe that the, the potential double doors, if, if needed, should be shifted to, to the same side that the doors are on and there should be a bay window next to them. The typical door assembly is, is, is about three, four and a half feet. The typical double door assembly is six feet. You would still have a significant bay window to the side and you would keep that rhythm as you're walking down Fifth or down Broadway. You would still sense that rhythm. And I think that's very important. So I would ask that they explore that. And the last thing I would say is that they should take a, a look at the, the door frames. They looked very wide in one of the elevations. Just make sure that those are as close to historic in terms of their, the width of the rail as, as possible. I think it's great that we're not talking about signage here, but I think we should ask the staff to take a look at what's been done in the past and make sure that having the signage 18 inches in is in fact the best solution. Or if some more controlled kind of signage on the facade would be net, net better.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I actually, I agree with everything that Commissioner Goldblum has stated, certainly with regard to the, to the grills, the Roman grills. My only exception would be the side lights. I think the side lights can be eliminated by the use of power assist doors and they should be.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
I'm, I'm in general agreement with what, and Holfer Smith said. But I'm not disagreeing with the two Michaels. Some of the suggestions may indeed help to enhance the building. And I agree with the rooftop. I, I think the rooftop is an improvement. But obviously waiting for the light, the color to, to fade over time, I think a slightly darker tint to work with the staff is appropriate. But I, I do think that the mullion should be reintroduced at the minimum either way, depending on how the Commissioners feel about whether the lattice should be totally fully implemented. But also the point being made about the ventilation as an opportunity to use that during this, this period in our history.
And Commissioner Latry?
I, I think overall, the applicant has done a really terrific job here. I am okay with. I am okay with, happy about all, overall about what they're doing on the roof. And I agree with my fellow commissioners about changing the color. I think that would be helpful. I'm fine with this new entryway. I like the fact that the applicant has reintroduced the coffered ceiling. It's a nice nod to the original architecture of the building and I love the fact that you could see it. And at the same time, I appreciate the idea of bringing light into the lobby. It's not a large lobby. I think the, the storefronts are sort of, they're, you know, it's a kind of a little bit of a challenge in the way. I mean, I think this represents an, an interest in not only retaining the look and feel of what was here originally, but making sure that the storefronts can accommodate today's needs. So I'm okay with the side panel. I think it looks, the, the look is close enough. It's very attractive. And I think this issue of the double doors is, you know, hard to speak to because the applicant, you know, it's funny because if you see what's going on here, there's a lot of introduction or, or, and retaining of what was going on at the street level in the building early on, when there were a lot of little storefronts all around the building. And that's really what we're moving toward in the city today as the need for retail space changes. So I appreciate the fact that the applicants, the application speaks to that and, and as part of that speaks to retaining the historical look and feel. But I also can appreciate the fact that they, you know, want to not only address, that they want to address the need for, you know, possible large user here and also in the building and possible large retail tenants and they need to have some flexibility. So I'm okay with that as well. And then finally, I do think it would be good if they could go back and look at the louvers. They're a little heavy, but in light of the fact that they are trying to activate the space in the cellar for restaurant and retail use. And again, especially in today's environment and in the future, it's very important to have proper air circulation. So that needs to happen.
Nurse Jefferson.
The lobby. First of all, incredible presentation. I mean, it's very thorough, architecturally thorough. The lobby, I can see the, the idea of light and being able to see all the way through. But I think a lot of these historic buildings have a tone, a mood. And by putting the grill in, it emphasized to me restores the mood of that lobby. So if it's a bit darker, it doesn't matter. It's the mood that you want. I think we should, I don't mind the new storefronts. I think they're fine, but I think going back to the original, the power assist would be better. They're a little chunkier and they're, they feel original. They restore that mood again. The grills are fine. I can't see, we do have to have fresh air. We do need to have, have access to grills. So it's, it's a mechanical, technical problem, but this is a good solution for that. And on the penthouse, I, I think they did a fine job on the penthouse enlarging the windows. I think it's very beautifully done. My only issue on the penthouse is that it looks so modern, you know, it looks so slick that I don't know if the color is enough or there's a texture that's required to, to make some kind of distinguishing it from the original facade. But it has this slickness to it, that this modern feel, that should be the mood to change a little, the texture to change.
All right. Thank you all commissioners. And I'd like to thank the applicant, applicant for a detailed presentation and commissioners for all of your thoughtful comments. And I think we are very largely supportive here with some refinements. And so I think for the applicant team, we will take an action today so that you have an opportunity to develop some responses to some of the refinements that the commissioners requested. So you know, specifically on the rooftop addition, I think look at the color a little bit more. On the entry, we've heard a variety of opinions, but many feeling that it does need to be more restorative an approach and have at least the mullions, if not the actual lattice or grills put back. And that may be a way to also help with your entire mechanical system and, and thinking about the louvers within the storefronts. So we heard some comments about the heaviness of them, the design of them or end or amount and placement. So I think, thinking about how to refine those louvers would, I think, address many comments. And then in general, in terms of the storefronts, I think we've heard some comments about doing power assist doors in lieu of doors with side lights. And that's something you can explore and talk to us about next time. And I think in, and at least, at the very least, I think that there have been some suggestions about looking at the thickness of the mullions and the detailing. And that may help as well with that, as you explore the solutions for the doors with, that you need for barrier free access. And then I think for the egress doors, I think just think about, you know, how, how many you need and how we can really preserve as much of a rhythm of these projecting storefronts as possible. So with just some refinements and I think a little more information, we'll be very close to being able to vote. So please work with the staff on that and we'll have you back as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey commissioners, we're moving on to item number four. This is docket number LPC 20-04558, 305 West End Avenue in the West End Collegiate Historic District Extension, Grove Manhattan, Block 1184, Lot 77. An application for a certificate of appropriateness. A colonial revival style apartment building designed by Schwartz &amp; Gross and built in 1919 to 20. The application is to alter a sidewalk canopy.
And commissioners, the applicants are just joining. You just give us a moment. And the applicant has joined the hearing. Somebody now have control of the presentation. If you can begin the presentation, please. So please remember to unmute yourself. So I think the applicant is having some difficulty with audio. Staff, perhaps you can just walk through the presentation while we try to get the applicant connected via audio. If you can, Marcella, thank you.
Sure. The, I'll also note that the presentation has changed in the last 24 hours, so I'm a little rusty. But the application is at 305 West End Avenue. If we can move to the next slide, you can see a zoom in of the previous shot of the historic canopy. I believe this dates prior to the 1940s photo. And if we go to the next slide, the proposal is to remove some of the nonhistoric cladding around the canopy. And if you can move to the next slide, as well as some of the infill below the canopy, which includes dropped ceiling, lighting fixtures, nonhistoric lighting fixtures. This originally came as a, as a staff level, an application for certificate of no effect. But we asked them to do some probes and found some historic, historic fabric behind all of this, behind this sort of nonhistoric infill. So as you can see in these photos, you can see some of the historic metal canopy above and, and all this, all of this infill below is going to be removed. If we can go to the next.
Marcella, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I will take over from here. Apologies.
Thank you.
Mita, Danielle, and I'm presenting for Talbot Nielsen Feld. Someone is actually going to go back a slide? That's okay. So as Marcella kind of stated briefly, we are going to be proposing to removing this existing framing and fluorescent lighting that's below. If you can see above here, there is some, there are some existing coffers here, which is, our intention is to highlight this detail. And you can see it in the image also as well to the right hand side. There are coffers above that are existing. And this is just showing some street photos again, just showing what you can see from underneath in terms of the framing and fluorescent lighting as it exists now. And there is some fascia and bronze, antique bronze type frame around the fascia above the fabric awning, which has already been approved on a separate application. What we are proposing to do is to remove all of the framing underneath and to bring attention to the coffers that do exist. The intention is to actually add some accent lighting by dropping these panels in the center and allowing for lighting on the perimeter, which will then highlight these existing coffers that exist in these three sections underneath. We will also do propose to remove the existing fascia and replace that in the framing as well. The framing for the awning itself, the fabric awning below is rusted out, so that also needs to be replaced. We did create some probes just as the commission's request to see what was existing in terms of historical fabric. As you can see, from what we could find, it's just the existing steel framing and the metal fascia panel beyond that. And this is just a look from below, again, looking up at the condition of the framing that is holding the fabric awning in place below, which as you can see is rusted out and needs to be replaced. And this is a image from above, looking at the top of the existing awning. We also do intend to replace the roofing. This is just more detail in terms of the materials and the colors that we're looking at. The dark bronze panel for the fascia above the fabric awning, dark bronze dropped panels in the center with the perimeter lighting, as I mentioned before. There are also going to be some intermediate lights, which I will show you in the reflected ceiling plan, and a heater centrally located above the entrance door. This is an existing plan showing the frame that you saw in the existing photos and the fluorescent lighting, which we proposed to remove, is an existing section showing the existing coffering in detail that is existing that we want to highlight. This is an existing section showing those three coffered areas as they exist currently. And this is a proposed reflected ceiling plan. So the intent again is to highlight the three existing coffered areas by dropping the central panels and then creating, adding some perimeter lighting, accent lighting to highlight these areas. There is some just general illumination, letting with some downlights. And again, some recessed heating above the doors as this is the main entrance into the building. This is the proposed elevation. Elevation wise, it doesn't change all that much as we are going to be replacing the fascia panels that are there, the existing frame. At request of ownership, we're going to be adding a taxi light for the occupants if they need help. And this is a proposed longitudinal section showing the three coffered areas. Here you can see that on the perimeter, we're also going to be dropping some anodized panels here as well. If we go back, the B and I can show you that the perimeter is a little, not in the best condition. It's deteriorated and rusted out as well. So the intent is to highlight the coffers as that is the historical fabric that we can see that is existing, that is remaining. And to highlight that with some perimeter lighting. And this is a transverse section just showing the heaters and the lights at the perimeter here, again accenting the coffers. And this is in large detail. Again, just showing the existing coffer. We intend to highlight that and also by painting these out above it to be a lighter color and then actually painting these coffers a similar color to the frame that we intend to replace on the fascia band.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? All right, not seeing any. Oh, yes. Commissioner Holford Smith, please go ahead.
My question is about the, the depth of the fascia. I'm wondering if it would be possible to reduce the overall depth. It looks like you're matching the existing and the proportion is a little clunky. And I wondered if you could sort of raise the ceiling to reduce the height of that fascia panel.
Sonia, can you answer? Is she there?
Yes. I mean, we were maintaining the existing fascia height, so we weren't going to change that. To bring it up, we would be closer to the underside. And I don't think we would have enough distance to actually provide lighting and also provide the heating element. We can try to bring it up a little bit closer, but I still think we need to maintain a certain distance from the underside of the canopy to that heating element as well as the lighting.
Okay, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Jefferson, you have to accept the request to unmute.
The, the canopy image that you have now, when was that dated? Do you know? Can you go back to that, to the original canopy? The image you have? The photo? That's the historic. Current canopy and that's the historic canopy, correct?
And? Yes.
You have any, you don't have any pictures of what you see from the reflected ceiling plan, right? Because what we're seeing is actually a modern interpretation. If you go back to, go, go to the existing now, looking up. Yeah, this is, this is, when, this was put in, when in the 30s or 20s or? When was this, on this piece, you know?
That I don't know because it looks like at one time there was a T shaped canopy, but I believe that was removed and this is what was replaced. So I don't know when the operation previously happened.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I just had also a question about the attachment of the light fixtures. And can you just speak to again, your probe work and how that, those attachment points may intersect with historic fabric?
For the most For the most part, we're looking to attach mostly to the center of these areas, which seem to be in the better condition, obviously minimize any penetrations if possible. And the lights themselves actually sit, if we go to the section. They sit mostly within the actual metal panels themselves and not really interfere with the existing canopy itself. So really, it's these several locations, which we'll try to minimize if we can in terms of penetrations to the existing canopy.
So how many do you think you need per canopy, per, per structure? Is there sort of four or is it eight or?
Well, I guess in this location, which has the most, this is the center where we have the heat lamp and the lights, you'd probably have the most here, so possibly six.
Okay.
Like I mentioned, we will try, like during, you know, shop drawing process and everything to minimize as much as we can.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm not seeing any other questions at the moment. We might have more after testimony, but we'll move right now to public testimony portion of the item. And if there's anyone in the meeting who would like to speak, please raise your hand so we can identify you and we'll start with anyone who's signed up in advance. So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Crisavage to walk us through that testimony.
Okay, thank you. We didn't have anybody sign up to speak. And I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we do. Manhattan Community Board seven recommends approval for the project and Lamarc West is in support of the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, I'm going to start unmuting you and we can move to closing the hearing and starting our discussion. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. All right. So why don't we start the discussion with Commissioner Latfi, would you like to start with this one?
Sure. I think overall, this project is fine. I'm, I'm happy that the applicant was able to locate some historic fabric and is doing and is showing it now as part of the project. I, I, I think that it would be good if they could continue to work with staff to make sure that any potential damage to the historic fabric is minimized. And other than that, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Jefferson?
It to me, it's kind of clumsy. The proportions are off. It, it, it's fine. It's, it's just nothing special. And I don't even understand how the proportions are made. I mean, I don't understand the proportion, how they did it, but it's, it's, it's you know, it's just too.
Okay. Okay. Shamir Baron?
Yes, I, I'm not convinced that the light fixture installation or the ways that they proposed to do that won't really cause damage to some of the historic fabric. And I don't know exactly what I need to see in order to be convinced otherwise, but I'm still concerned about that.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think I'm in agreement with Commissioner Jefferson about the proportions and the clunkiness of it, but it's sort of inoffensive. But you know, ideally, I would like to see more of the original. I don't know if that's possible. If they could reduce the height of the overall metal fascia that I had asked about. I understand that the heaters take up a certain depth and they need to accommodate that, but perhaps the, the awning below it could have a different height so that they weren't equal. And I think the, the proposal to paint the underside of the coffers, this bright white is going to provide a really stark contrast to the bronze. And I think it should be darkened, so it's not quite so such a stark contrast. I think it'll just look like black and white, looking at it, you know, looking from one to the other. So I'm sure they could work with staff on that, but it would be nice to have a little, little more elegant proportion to the canopy if possible.
Eric Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with some of the comments of previous speakers. The proportions may be a little awkward, but it's not, you know, it is not whatever. I'm more concerned about you know, making sure that there's no damage to historic fabric. And I agree that darkening the those white enclosures would help just to, so it doesn't call much attention to itself. It's sort of like first do no harm, you know, so otherwise it's, I think it's approvable. It's, you know, it's just, it's it's not going to be returning toward very close to historic. So just to have it be sort of fairly innocuous, I think is the more important thing here.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with Erardo and Anne, but I think that I think there are opportunities here that are missed and I think it's unfortunate in that they proposed work perpetuates a concealment of historic material that is on the facade of the building. That's, that's just, it seems to me inexplicable. I mean, I think the skirts can definitely be shortened, the fabric skirt to whatever they feel is the minimum. But I think more importantly, it should be set in so that the pilast at the corners of the marquee are become visible. If you look at the original historic photo, the relationship between the marquee and the pilasters was purposeful. By having the skirt cover the capitals of the pilasters, you erase that and it basically just becomes this huge floating box that kind of hovers like a spaceship in front of the building. And I, I think that that, that weightiness is not only due to its height, six feet is an awfully tall height, but to its plannarity. So I think that step one is shorten the skirt. Step two is step it in. I agree a hundred percent with what Anne had said about the white paint. Terrible, terrible idea. Not historic. And I think that the, the, the metal fascia is just a a, an admission of inability. I think that it is what's there and therefore we can't tell them to not do it, I guess, but it's just a surrender to mediocrity. And I would, I would urge them to, if you look at the original marquee, it had proportion, it had horizontality, it had rhythm, all of which could be recreated for nothing. No, you're doing the work. Try to make it better.
Okay, Commissioner Davensher?
I agree with Erardo and Anne and, and Michael. I mean, they're, they're really lucky. This isn't an individual landmark. There, there's just there's a, a hospital banality to this thing that is just driving me crazy, but I, I think the, the first steps are to, to work with the proportions, expose those, those pilaster capitals without a doubt. Eliminate the stark contrast in the, in the coffers and, and see where you can go from there.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
I agree with the, the rest of the commissioners. First do no harm. And try to do as much improvement to enhance this, you know, this box currently.
And Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I just weigh in with everybody else. Being last, I don't have to add much more, but I think this could be much better. And I think working much more closely with staff to get it better. And I hope we, we do get to see another version of this. I would, if not, I would vote against it today.
Okay. All right. So I think there were a number of suggestions here that could make it better, but I think an overall sort of you know, lemon, lamenting that it isn't even more articulated and proportional to the building. So why don't we take no action? I think that we have some very clear cut things that can be done, right, to lower the, shorten the skirt, to set the skirt in, to make the pilasters of the capitals visible, to darken the white paint so you don't have a contrast and to really understand what the potential impact is on the historic fabric. So, you know, those are the base points, but I would ask you to also to think about how it could be articulated to even further kind of restore some of the texture and proportionality of the marquee. And so we'll take no action and we'll work with the staff and we'll have you back as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, the next item is item number five, an application for certificate of appropriateness, docket number twenty dash one oh six three four. One forty seven East sixty ninth street in the Upper East Side Historic District, Borough of Manhattan, block fourteen oh four, lot twenty five. A garage slash residence originally built as a carriage house in eighteen eighty and altered in the neo Jordan, Georgian style by Barney and Colt in nineteen thirteen. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and install a privacy wall at the rear terrace.
Okay, Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. Given control of the presentation. You are now ready to begin, please state your name.
Thank you. Hi, it's Cass Stackelberg from Higgins Quays Barthen Partners. Good afternoon Commissioners. I'm joined by my colleague Jonathan Taylor as well as Jason Gold and Richard Lewis, Richard Lewis Architects. As Caroline described, the project site is one forty seven East sixty ninth street, located here on the north side of sixty ninth street. Just make sure my cursor is working and you can see it. Go back one, located on the north side of sixty ninth street. It's a three story garage building constructed originally in eighteen eighty as a stable and then altered in nineteen thirteen. As you can see from the plot plan, the middle portion of the block within the Upper East Side Historic District, the middle portion of the block is characterized by three and four and two story row houses and carriage houses and garages. And then on the west end of the block is a large apartment building in the district as well as a larger apartment building over here on Third Avenue that is outside of the district. And then directly to the south, on the south side of sixty ninth street is the twenty eight story Imperial House designed by Emory Roth and Sons and constructed in nineteen sixty. You can see a tax photo of the building. The building, particularly its front facade, remains in good condition. Nearly all of its historic components remain in place. And the scope of work is limited to an addition on the roof, a setback addition that's not visible and construction of a stair bulkhead and raised chimney, which are visible from limited vantage points. And as well modifying a garden wall at the back of the lot that is also not visible. This is a view from last winter. Looking west along sixty ninth street, so you can get a sense of the context. Two and three story garage and stable buildings to the east. The project site here, one forty seven is outlined in this box and you can see this sort of variegated roof scape. Different geometries, some street wall buildings, some buildings that have sloping roofs, a lot of interesting architectural fabric. The predominant material, of course, is brick across this portion of the block with some brownstone fronted row houses directly to the west. Continuing the existing conditions off the back of the building. So this is the second and third floor of, of the building. There's a large scope of work that we're working with the staff on back here, removing this flue, infilling these through wall units. Some modifications to this opening. Retaining all the brick masonry, the corbeling across the top of the, of the elevation remains. And the view here on the right, looking west in the very shallow rear yard of the property, it's really the roof of the first floor. This wooden fence will be replaced with a glass brick garden wall, which you'll see in just a few slides. Some existing photos across the roof. The roof is populated by a number of skylights. This very large skylight here on the west side of the roof. This actually covers a light well that is recessed down into the building that will be retained. Some other skylights that will be removed and then mechanical equipment across, across the back. There are chimneys that belong both to one forty seven and one forty nine East sixty ninth street. Right here at the front edge of the roof, as well as some other chimneys along, along the east lot line. A few aerial views, just to give you some, some context. So across the bottom here is one forty seven East sixty ninth street outlined in, in white. It's a hundred feet deep on the first level and about eighty eighty four feet deep on the second and third floors. And a few things just to point out. So as I mentioned, this mid block portion is characterized by these two, three and four story carriage houses, garages, row houses. Many of these already have additions. So if you look in this image on the upper left, again, this is one forty seven. The two row houses directly to the west, so one forty five and one forty three. This has a very large historic addition with a visible mansard roof on the, on the street side, an addition here. And then on the carriage houses directly to the, to the east, an addition you can see here in this slide here as well, and then two houses down to the east as well at one fifty one. So the block has a series of additions, some visible, not visible in the immediate, in the immediate context. Existing and proposed axiometric views, just to give you a sense of the scope of work. So again, existing on the, on the upper left and proposed here on the lower right. You can see the existing skylights and mechanical equipment that exist on the roof today. The taller building to the west with the mansard addition, the building in the foreground at one forty nine with its later addition here. And what we're proposing is a setback one story addition. You can see the front south facing elevation here extending to here. As I mentioned, the addition itself is not visible. Portions of this brick clad stair bulkhead and this chimney, which would need to be raised. It's this chimney here, this would need to be raised. Portions of this chimney and bulkhead are visible from the east. I'll also just mention that the way that the volume of the addition has been planned, both in terms of setting it down into the existing roof structure and setting it back precludes the need from raising any of the chimneys right at the front of the building. So that includes both the chimneys for, for our property at one forty seventy sixty ninth street or this chimney here at, at one forty nine. Those chimneys, if raised, would be visible from directly over the primary facade, but because of the position of the of the penthouse as described, pushed back and pushed down. It does not require raising those chimneys in the foreground. Turning around a hundred and eighty degrees now, looking at the back of the building. This is the existing on the upper left. Again, the first floor is full depth and then the second and third floors set back. You can see the equipment in the skylights and the wooden fence here. The proposal is to replace that in the same geometry with a glass garden wall, glass brick garden wall, some repairs in the rear facade. And then the rooftop addition, the rear elevation would be faced in a gray stucco. The front elevation would be brick. And then the bulkhead and chimney on the east lot line. The existing elevation along sixty ninth street, we're working with the staff on a number of repairs and restorative elements on the front facade, getting rid of these louvered transom and panel at the, at the front doors and some other small modifications. And then a proposed elevation, so the addition here, the railing at the upper roof and the bulkhead and chimney. You know, none of these elements are visible from, from the front facade, but they are, are clear in, in elevation. Turning around to the rear elevation. So again, this is the, our property at one forty seven. The row house to the, to the west with its addition On, uh, on the roof here and then the carriage, uh, carriage house to the east, again, also with an addition. Uh, and then the proposed elevation, um, here with the, uh, brick, um, glass brick garden wall and then the addition and, uh, railings. As I mentioned, there's a, a scope of repair and restoration work across the rear facade that we're working with a staff, uh, staff on corbelled cornice. And, um, addition, uh, elevation to the, uh, visible here. Some, uh, sections, uh, an existing section, uh, this is cut through the light well. Uh, so you can see this existing light well that extends down into the body of the third floor. Uh, and you can also see the attic space, which we're taking advantage of with the addition, which you can see here. Uh, the addition is sort of set down into the plane of the existing, um, roof slope to minimize its height, retaining existing light well. Uh, and then the, um, section through the new, uh, addition above that third floor. Looking now east, uh, the existing section. Here again, you can see this area here that we're taking advantage of by setting the addition down into that volume. Uh, this section is cut through the proposed stair and stair bulkhead. Uh, this is the sloped stair bulkhead, sloped in this direction to minimize or eliminate visibility from the street. And then the chimney of the adjacent property that needs to be raised as part of, uh, the construction. Comparative sections, uh, detailed sections here again, existing on the top and proposed, uh, on the bottom, similar information. Um, just some dimensional, uh, information, the setback, um, uh, to the front edge of the, uh, penthouses. Uh, it's thirteen foot seven from the front face of the building, about fifteen feet from the, uh, front slope of the roof. Um, and the bulkhead itself is, uh, about twenty seven feet back, um, from the roof. The setback off the back of the building, uh, is fourteen and a half feet to the back of the, uh, of the extension. So flipping around, um, so from the front, uh, of the building back to the front edge of the bulkhead is twenty seven feet and about thirty feet. To the chimney, uh, then mechanicals will all be, uh, to the north, uh, well out of the line of sight. We prepare, uh, we've constructed a bulk, uh, excuse me, we've constructed a mock, a mockup, but, um, because of the trees on the, the, the trees on the street are particularly lush. Um, and, uh, even today, they obscure, uh, nearly all the views of, of the top of the building and even the mockup. So what we've done is we've included, you know, a real time photograph of the street frontage and, and the building, uh, with a mockup. But we've also just for transparency, also included, um, three D renderings just to illustrate, um, if the trees were not there, sort of the degree of visibility, which as I mentioned, we think is, is limited. In this view, um, just in from Lexington Avenue, looking northeast, there is no visibility. So this is, um, forty, one forty seven. The existing view, the proposed view, as I said, there is no visibility, but because of the trees, you, you barely even see the building, uh, in many of these views. So we've included these, these renderings as well. Coming around, um, now, uh, on the east side. So we're standing, uh, right in front of Imperial House, uh, one forty seven shown here in the key plan. This is, uh, our existing view. You can see this sort of variegated roof line, the chimneys that exist, this large volume here is uh, one of the apartment buildings that fronts onto Lexington Avenue. This is the existing view and then the proposed, uh, computer rendering that just shows, um, the portions of the brick clad stair bulkhead that would be visible where the cursor is, that's really the limit of the visibility. Uh, and then this is a photograph, um, just taken recently, just illustrating that with the trees, you can't see anything. So we've included these views just to give an indication of, of what that visibility is. Um, to the east, um, where there is a break in the trees, you can see actually in this area where my, uh, cursor is, you can see the orange, uh, netting of our, of our mockup and that translates, um, to this visibility where the portion of the stair bulkhead is visible and the raised chimney. And you see it, of course, in the context of these sloping roofs. This is an existing chimney, uh, closer to the street line. So we feel that both in terms of its materiality and the sort of brick plating, it, it blends in with the, uh, adjacent facades and other rooftop elements. And then in terms of its features, that they're consistent with the other features that you see, uh, along the streetscape. We've also included a few images of some other views. There's a very, uh, slight view, uh, of the top of the chimney. Uh, this is standing on Lexington Avenue, looking across the one story podium of Imperial House, the, the apartment building. Uh, you can just make out the top of the chimney, um, here, similarly along, uh, the east side of Third Avenue from this view. Uh, you can just make up the top of the chimney above the trees here, but you don't actually see, uh, the building itself. Uh, and then we include this view as well. This is a view looking through this, uh, uh, gap between the large apartment buildings on Lexington Avenue over this service entry. You don't actually see, um, the, the rooftop, but we've included that just for, for context. Um, some, uh, and then of course, um, directly across the street, um, looking, this is actually from outside the district, looking into the district, then at the block front on the north side. Uh, there is no visibility of, uh, of any of the proposed rooftop features, um, from directly across the street. A series of comparative floor plans. So this, uh, a roof plan, uh, existing on the top, proposed on the bottom, showing, uh, the p- position of the, uh, proposed stair bulkhead. Uh, and the chimney here that's to be raised, all the mechanicals will be off on the north side of the roof. Um, this ch- this bulkhead taps into the stair that exists, um, on the floors below, uh, the new, um, skylight over the existing, uh, light well. Um, and then the, uh, required FDNY clearance, uh, between the two. Uh, and then a plan at the fourth floor. So again, this is the front edge of the rooftop addition, the south edge, uh, setback. Thirteen and a half feet from the face of the building, about fifteen feet from the front edge of the roof. Uh, and then the back of the addition, fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of the roof there. The second floor plan, again, this is the extent of the outdoor space. This is the, uh, geometry of the existing wooden fence. And we're proposing to replace that, um, with a glass brick, uh, garden wall, um, in basically the same location. And then finally, um, some material samples, the gray stucco that would be used for the, um, north face of the rooftop addition. Uh, the south face, as I said, would be brick, uh, and then glass brick, um, for the, for the garden wall, uh, in the, in the rear portion of the lot. That's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, have we any questions at this time? Okay. I think it was a very clear presentation, so it doesn't appear that we have any questions right now. So we'll move to public testimony. And I'll turn it over to Lisa Krasavich. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And we will start with anyone who signed up in advance first. Okay, Lisa?
Great, thank you. Um, let's see, we'll start with Friends of the Upper East Side. And I just brought you in as a panelist. If you could state your name for the record, unmute yourself.
Um, just one second, I'm lost now. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Laura Varelli representing Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. Chair Carol and Honorable Commissioners, Friends would like to commend the applicant for such a clear and complete presentation. We believe that not only the commission benefits from a thoroughly well-presented proposal. The overall community largely comprised of people with little familiarity with architectural drawings also gains from it, being able to better understand and provide feedback to proposals on their neighborhoods. In regards to the proposal, Friends Preservation Committee believes it, this to be an excessively large addition to this modest carriage house. However, its setback from both the front and rear facades guarantee a minimal visibility. Therefore, we do not oppose the proposal and agree that the one story rooftop addition will not detract from the historic district. Finally, while we believe that the glass brick rear wall is slightly too modern for the building and its surroundings. We do not think it is inappropriate on this specific block where unfortunately the donut is mostly gone. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I just, as a reminder, we're just taking testimony right now on one forty seven east sixty ninth street. And I am looking for people who wa- wish to testify just on that item. Um, we did have somebody signed up, um, Robert Lipson. And I can bring you in as a panelist. Robert, if you want to speak and just want to unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. And if you could state your name for the record, please.
Hi, it's Robert Lipson. Uh, I live at one forty nine east sixty ninth street next door. So ba- basically I, I really don't have any comments. Uh, the one thing I would add is we did have a, a meeting yesterday with the team. And that chimney, um, that actually rises above the bulkhead, that's not active. So we've agreed, uh, that we, they don't need to raise it. So, that's a good thing. So a lot of the things you could see at the oblique, you could see that at oblique angles and you won't be able to see anything anymore. So, um, uh, otherwise I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, and I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. We had an, an Alexi, um, Tasler. They signed up, but I don't see anybody with that name. So I think, seeing now their hands raised, I think that's the end of the testimony.
Thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do. We actually do have, um, a comment sent in from Alexi Tasler. It's on behalf of his client saying that they're concerned with the chimneys not being accurately depicted in the drawings. And then we also have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board A recommending approval.
Thank you. Okay, Cass, would you like to respond to the comment particularly about the chimney?
Sure. Um, there were two comments about the chimney, one about how it was being represented. I think, I think the chimneys have all been represented, um, accurately. Uh, and then just regarding, um, uh, Robert Lipson's comment. You know, first and foremost, I'd like to say that what's been really wonderful about the project is the open dialogue between, between neighbors, which doesn't always happen and it's, um, been a, a real positive for this project. I was aware of those, uh, that meeting yesterday. We thought we would proceed with the presentation as drawn, just to not, um, confuse things. Uh, we might ask that the commissioners evaluate what is, um, you know, what's been presented, but, um, obviously if that chimney isn't active and doesn't need to be, uh, ex- that's one less thing for, you know, for everybody to have to consider, but we, we left it as is. I didn't, I, I purposely didn't mention it just because I wasn't certain. If that was a, uh, fixed decision, but, uh, we, we appreciate the feedback. Um, and then just in terms of, um, the Friends testimony, I appreciate the comments about the, the presentation. We've all worked hard to make it as clear as possible. Uh, I would like to just clarify that the addition itself is not visible. Um, it's only the, um, the bulkhead and, and the chimney. Um, and that the, uh, the brick garden wall, you know, it's a, it's a dimensional brick. I think commissioners have seen that material before. And I think it will actually blend very nicely with the, particularly the rear elevation at that second floor where there's a larger scale opening. There's a sort of more, uh, there have already been contemporary interventions at the building at that, in that part of the building. So we think it'll be appropriate in the sort of overall context of the building and, and the immediate vicinity. So.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, and I'm going to start unmuting you so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So please look for that request. Okay. All right. And, uh, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion, um, this rooftop addition, which is setback and sunk into the roof. So that we're really looking at the visibility of the chimney and the bulkhead in the context of this, um, roof line and the backdrop of another building. And then the glass block at the rear. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start?
Uh, yeah, sure. Uh, I, I find this, uh, really totally appropriate. Uh, I think that the, uh, visibility has been very well addressed by the team. And that it's minimally visible from most aspects than wanted is, it's, uh, in the context of, uh, larger buildings and, uh, you know, some other rooftop accretions in general. Uh, so, you know, I, I can approve it as presented and, uh, I second the comment about, you know, I think Cass always gives a very good and thorough presentation. I found, you know, everything, uh, helpful. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree a hundred percent with Diana.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Everything is great about this. Thank you.
Commissioner Chen.
Totally agree. Very nice presentation, uh, clear, uh, clarity and it's a very nice project.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland.
You know, some buildings by either by their design or their location are just tailor made to have rooftop additions. Few actually, but this is certainly one. And, uh, isn't it great when neighbors work together? So this is a, a good, a good and very approvable scheme.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Latfi.
I agree. I think this is a, this project's really well done. Everything about it works, you know, the, uh, the massing proportions, choice of materials. Blends in with minimal visibility, so I can approve this.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson.
I've passed by this building many, many times and I always thought it was beautiful. Then I saw the drawings, uh, architectural drawings and I think that it's even more beautiful. It's appropriate.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I agree with everything that's been said. It's a beautiful project.
Okay, and Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree.
Okay, great. So I think we all agree, this is a very appropriate project in terms of its size, scale, massing materials and amount of visibility. So Commissioner Chapin, would you go ahead and make that motion?
Yes, thank you. Uh, in the matter of certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, LPC twenty one zero six three four, one forty seven east sixty ninth street, Upper East Side Historic District. Garage residence originally built as a carriage house in eighteen eighty and altered in a, the Neo Georgian style by Barney and Colt in nineteen thirteen. Application is to construct a rooftop addition and install a privacy wall at the rear terrace. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building. That beginning in the early twentieth century, many carriage houses were historically altered to accommodate new uses, often including changes to their typically simple forms and limited size. Therefore, the proposed addition will be consistent with the historic evolution and adaptive reuse of this building and other buildings of this type. That the addition will be set back from the front and rear facades and moderate in height, thereby not overwhelming or obscuring the original masting of the building. With the cumulative size of the building with the proposed rooftop addition will be in keeping with the range of sizes of buildings on this block, which includes some significantly larger apartment and institutional buildings. That the addition will only be visible from public thoroughfares at a distance within the context of a streetscape with buildings of varied heights and roof lines. That the addition will feature simple design and massing as well as cladding materials and finishes, which are typical of the surrounding context, thereby helping it remain a harmonious secondary presence in the streetscape views. That the presence of the glass brick block wall within the context of the varied massings of the rear facades and extensions of the neighboring buildings will not detract from the surrounding properties or central green space. That the translucency and limited height of the bu- glass block wall will help it to visually remain in keeping with the character of fencing and screening and not as an enlargement of the rear extension. That the glass block wall will only be seen from public thoroughfare through a limit, limited incidental view at a distance and not in conjunction with the primary facade. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, thanks. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Latfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Luck, thank you. And we will now break for lunch. We are going to take. We are going to take a half hour break, so we'll be back at one thirty. So we'll now ask all members of the public to exit the meeting. And we need you to do that so that we can lock it during lunch. And if we have to remove you ourselves, you won't be able to get back in. So we ask everybody to just exit the meeting now and re-enter the meeting at one thirty. Commissioners, you can turn your cameras and your sound off, audio off, and we'll see everyone at one.